Okay. The guy holds on, but um I'll call the uh regular, no this is kind of a, we're, I don't know, this is special or regular.
Regular.
It's regular.
Uh, meeting of the planning and zoning board for good worry to order. Um, we'll call?
Vicky Myers.
Here.
Mark Fleischer.
Bob Hunter.
Here.
Greg Schuh.
Here.
Tracy Thomas.
Here.
Woody Tyner.
Here.
Pete Powers.
And uh, we all talked to Pete yesterday and he must be running late, so.
Wonder if he knows it's at two.
I hope so. Okay. Um, I think that uh, we should talk about changing our agenda. When I sent this, this agenda into um, to Tim and Rhonda, they, the parking committee had not had their meeting, it wasn't even scheduled yet, so they didn't meet yesterday and um, I'd like to change uh, number seven to say um, add discussion and possible action. Is any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've modified our agenda. Okay, public comments on agenda items. Any comments from the public? Okay, no comments.
Any?
Please feel welcome to comment. Approval of minutes of the January fifteenth regular meeting? Um, were there any changes, corrections to the minutes? Okay, I have a few. Um, Woody is an alternate and Greg Schuh's a regular member. And also, we discussed, this would be on the uh.
Can you get that from Maddie, see if she can call Pete Powers, find out where he's at?
On page four, we talked about um, front yard setbacks too, to four thousand feet, less than four thousand feet would remain at twenty-five feet, four thousand, five thousand would be thirty feet, and five thousand to six thousand would be thirty-five feet, and we added that there'd be no homes over six thousand square feet.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Were Vince actually sending?
I emailed them.
We didn't get it back.
I emailed them to everybody and said, this is the only way we're sending is by email.
There was no attachment. And then the second.
Oh, we came with the agenda.
Oh, we had the agenda.
Everything was with it.
Mm-hmm. Just the agenda.
And I sent it to Heather too, and she posted all of it.
Just the agenda, just the agenda. I looked at her too.
Hold up.
I got it.
Yeah, and Heather got it, 'cause I copied hers, she has to send it out too.
The three of us down, something.
I'll copy it.
On the left side.
How about this, how about we just postpone a hundred minutes until next slide?
That's a good idea.
Okay.
She's going up. I can get up.
It'd be good if we got them anyway though, because are we gonna talk about some of the stuff in there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, like the houses and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Um, so can we make some copies of the things that were in there so they can refer to it as we go forward?
If that's on the slide, so.
I have.
I broke the whole thing down.
Okay.
I broke that whole paper down on these slides.
Cool, okay.
I thought that's what y'all wanted.
We did.
Okay, do y'all wanna see it?
You wanna get to it? Okay, number five, discussion and possible action on large homes. Now to turn.
Okay. Uh, I guess everybody knows that for years we've been dealing with the big house issue. Um, we've got several names. Um, but anyway, what I did was I took that piece of paper that we agreed on that we would look at, and then I took those extra regulations that we talked about, and I actually kinda broke it into, I put it on a single slide that's very complicated, and you don't have to look at it, but I'll try to break it down as best I can. I wish we had a way to put stuff on the wall to wanna make it easier. But what I did was I called these new home regulations, and of course, we gotta give it some kind of something, so we wanna call it a better community through progressive ideas, because we go to change things, if you just change them, people gotta have some idea of what you're doing. But in the meantime, you always need to remember that whenever you go to change something, especially in ordinance, or you come up with this new stuff, the primary driving factor should be life, safety, health, and welfare of your community. And so if you take that into account, typically, it holds water legally if you're looking at those aspects. That's what you've got to do. You just can't do it 'cause, you know, this guy's gonna build a marshal, they're gonna change the rule. So it's gotta be tied to that, that's typically what you're tied to.
That was life, safety, and?
Life, safety, health, and welfare. So, you know, and what's better for the community, better than for the community. So for these new home regulations, and you're building a better community through progressive ideas, what we decided was, was we would come up with, maybe if I turn the thing on will work. And the result, these proposed zoning ordinance changes, if we decide to do them, these are some of the benefits that's gonna come from it. We're gonna have a maximum house size of six thousand square feet, we'll have progressive setbacks, the larger the home, the bigger, the larger the setbacks. They should help us protect the stormwater discharge, 'cause there's gonna be a reduction in it. Um, so that'll help our environmental areas, that goes into that, that comment I made, that statement. Traffic reduction does the same thing, far as welfare, uh, better living conditions. Reduced parking, parking density, that, that goes into a lot of quality of life. Uh, reduced trash refuse, which seems to be a big theme around here now, and, but as you understand, it really does do that, because we're gonna be limiting the amount of people in the house based on the size of the square footage. And we're gonna do that with a couple of factors. We're gonna improve the quality of life, and we're gonna increase the open space because of those progressive setbacks, and we're gonna decrease the potential for secondary storm debris. In other words, we're not gonna have as much stuff out there to create those problems. Uh, all of those fall into that original statement I said, and we should always, instead of thinking about, we don't like this, or we don't like that, it should be, this is the driving force behind why we're making these changes. Okay. Current lock coverage and setbacks and parking requirements, the current ordinance allows for a thirty percent lock coverage for stormwater, that's the maximum under our phase-two stormwater ordinance. The setbacks for residential dwelling is twenty-five feet for the, for the, for the front, twenty feet for the rear, and five feet for the sides. And the parking currently is a nine-by-twenty space, and there are required one per bedroom. Go ahead, say it.
I just wanted to make sure I had that right. Okay, go.
Uh, proposed regulations based on home size, this is that, that sheet she had a few minutes ago, is the setback size, if there's less than four thousand, then we'll have our normal thirty percent of impervious area with our normal setbacks of twenty-five, twenty, and five. Between four thousand and five thousand square feet, the front setbacks will then expand to thirty feet, the rear to twenty-five, and the sides to seven. And the stormwater percentage will go down to twenty-five percent. In the, if you go from five thousand, between five thousand and six thousand, with six thousand being the largest thing you can build, the front will be thirty-five, the rear will be thirty, and the sides will be ten. And, and the thinking behind this is, is the larger the house, the, the larger buffer we have between structures, and what that does is it'll help us with many factors that we dealt with in the past, and we know what those are. The current required parking is nine-by-twenty, we propose to increase that to ten-by-twenty. Okay? Instead of nine-by-twenty, have it ten-by-twenty. A good example was that if we'd had ten-by-twenty, we have a bedroom, a house that people are talking about now that had eleven bedrooms, if we'd had the ten-by-twenty, that house would have only allowed to been, been allowed to have eight parking spaces. They only beat the parking spaces by foot on every one of them, had they had to reduce them by foot on their linear lot, they would've lost three spaces by one foot. Okay, now, that is, that, that is what we're hoping to see, I'm hoping that that's what we'd like to see or want to see. Because this next slide, maybe it's the next slide, the next slide breaks it down, breaks it all the way down for you. And it is kinda complicated, but I broke it down so that we could see. And what I want you to notice is, the reason I think this is equitable, if you look to the second and the third lot size there, everybody can have a, a house up to three-nine-nine-point-nine if you choose to go that size, and everybody can have thirty percent lock coverage. Do y'all understand what I just said? The first lot, which is fifty-by-a-hundred, could never have a four-thousand-square-foot house, because thirty percent limits it. The second lot would, would be able to have a six-thousand-square-foot, okay?
I have a question, but on this one here, that would only be an interior type lot, a dune lot, not an oceanfront lot, correct?
Right, right, that's right. But we, we do have some that'll, that'll fall into that category, but the fifty-by-a-hundred is our typical lot size here.
Yeah.
And so, it, it, you know, we're not distinguishing between front, you know, I mean, waterfront and, and canal. This is on the island, inside the zone. So, if you can see, it's equitable. Everyone can have up to a three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine-point-nine-square-foot home and get, and use thirty percent of lock coverage. Do you follow what I'm saying? If you chose to go bigger than that, then you have to use less than thirty percent. So, in my mind, the, you can't get any more equitable than that. So if you want to have a six-thousand-square-foot lot, on a lot that would allow a six-thousand-square-foot lot, you're gonna have the larger setbacks, and you're gonna have the reduced stormwater coverage. Does everybody understand that? Because that house has a bigger impact on all those things, traffic, trash, everything, stormwater, runoff, the whole nine yards. So we're protecting, we're protecting environmental areas, we're protecting our quality of life, and we're allowing everybody to have a house up to, up to basically four thousand square feet, and they get the same lock coverage if they choose so. If they want to use thirty percent of their impervious area, or up to thirty percent, then they can choose to have a smaller house. Does everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Tim, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just asking.
Mm-hmm.
When you say improved quality of life, what do you include as the criteria for improving quality of life?
Okay, if you take thirty percent of a fifteen-hundred-square-foot of this first one, then the maximum house size under roof that they can have is three-thousand square feet, okay? If you put the three, if you put five of those together, and you put three-thousand square feet on those lots, okay, then we are, we typically have what is our standard for quality of life, okay? And so you would have basically by, on lot size and that sort of thing, and what you could have for parking, because it's a reduced size, then that kinda sets the standard. When you move over into these larger lots, there's no, there's, there's nothing to limit them. So now we have heavier dens, we have much heavier density if we allow it to be like it is now, and we end up with a situation where we may have a standard-type delivery system inside the, the realm of what we're doing compared to uh, what I would call a monster. And so, every house, I don't know how many houses, but there's not been very many of them last year that was built above four thousand square feet, you follow what I'm saying? But a lot of them are limited by those sta, by those requirements. When you get down here further where the dunes are further out, the frontal dunes out, then they're, they're capable of having these large homes. And because they can do that, now they're adding to traffic.
Yeah.
You're adding additional traffic, you're adding additional trash, you're adding the different, uh, more popular population to the people, and we've got more people parking on it and staying there. Because we can't limit the number of bedrooms anymore. Do you follow what I'm saying? We just can't.
But to answer my question, those last three, four items that you said are, is the criteria for quality of life?
That's right, that's right. It's the criteria for quality of life.
It was on that first slide that had all the bullets.
Yes.
Less trash, less parking, less, but all that's.
All that, all that's, but I think, but he said, he wants it quantified in, is this how we're doing it, I think is what he said.
Yeah, 'cause you said a bullet point, it's the quality of life, and, and that's up to interpretation.
And if you look at it, if, in, from the economic standpoint, from the economic standpoint, if they go with the, if you look at it, I broke it down for you, the old square footage of thirty percent under a normal lot is fifteen-hundred-square-feet of impervious area, which means you could have three-thousand-square-foot house. That was the maximum. If you look at the second slide, which is the net lot, next common lot size up, then the old would allow for a six-thousand-square-foot house there, and this is where you're getting into a quality of life issue. And then if you look at the next size up, which is what we have on the west end, about the, you start around the eleven-hundred block on, you could have the possibility where you have lots that, that fall into those categories, then you're looking at the forty-five-hundred square feet under the old, which is a nine-thousand-square-foot use, yeah, under normal conditions. But if you go to the new and look at it, the first one, the most common lot size we had, there's no change. If you go to the next one, if they choose to go to the bigger one, right, then they can have up to five thousand square feet, but they're choosing a reduction in their stormwater if they go that high. And so it goes, it keeps right on going up, and it does the same thing, the next one's maximum is six thousand. If you look at them incrementally, if you look at the value, the new structural value there in the middle, the old's at the bottom. You see the first lot doesn't change. The second one goes, the new one is six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for just a structure if they build to the maximum, that's what that is, that's six-thousand-square-feet.
Where'd you get the one-twenty-five?
The one-twenty-five is a standard by the ICC for coastal construction. That is a standard for the, what it costs to build a, a house in this environment. It's also been quantified by me, I have to calculate what fair market value is. And so what we do is, I take a look at all the pricing that we get and contracts that we know about.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I average them out, I also average, I also look at what, and believe it or not, the county usually uses our, uses our numbers, because they are quantified, and you have to be qualified in doing cost estimates, which I am, I'm certified through North Carolina Park, uh, North Carolina State University.
I just wanted to say that um.
It's not a random number, is what I'm telling you. It's an accurate number.
When we got, when we built, we didn't do any bits that were that price.
Yeah. Well, you built a real nice house, didn't you?
Yeah, so that's probably part of it.
Yeah, but this, this is for the standard house, you know, there, a lot of those houses don't, don't have the stuff in them that your house, but for fair market value, for fair market value.
That's fine, I was wondering.
That's why, if you, if twenty years, uh, ten years from now, if I'm still alive, and I'm still working here, if you go to remodel your house, we're gonna, it's gonna be based off of fair market value against FEMA for your insurance.
Sure.
And not how much you want to spend, or how much you think you can spend. It has to be off, and I have to make that decision. But that's what this is based off of. It is equitable, because we're using the same numbers against the same numbers.
No, that's fine, and I, I followed that, I was just wondering where that number was pulled from.
That's a standard. Uh, I originally came up with the multipliers for everybody's permits when I was at Calabash, Sunset copied them, Ocean Isle, Ocean Isle copied, they actually copied my whole peak fee schedule. When I went to Leland, I revamped them, because Leland was different than our coastal communities, and then when I came back, it was fun to see that y'all were using my own schedule.
Tim, how deep are these, these lots? One of them that's got a house built on it, and there are three more lots that are currently for sale, right there where the, the course is set up. Are those lots a hundred feet deep?
The courses are set up.
The park course?
The park course, you know those?
On the right-hand side or left?
Yeah, the right-hand side.
Uh, they can go all the way across the marsh, can't they?
Yeah, only a few of them do that, most times a hundred feet deep.
And that's the same.
Most of them are a hundred feet deep.
Yeah, but there's some that go all the way across.
I don't think in that section.
And they get, they get credit for that going all the way across.
I don't think that section has got anything to go all the way across.
They don't? Well, they could have.
The ones that are between Greensboro and Scotchbonnet.
Yeah.
I think the ones that are down there.
But most of those are, most of those are limited based off of the bulkhead and the buildable area there, based off of the camera walls and the setbacks. So, they, you know, even though they're there, they still gotta be thirty feet from the hollow-to-mark and that kinda stuff, so.
With this, I'm just trying to think if, if someone were to consolidate those lots.
This would, this would stop them from building a big, big structure on it. The biggest they could get would be six thousand, but they would have to combine a whole lot of them to get that, get that square footage right there.
Yeah.
Yep. 'Cause you're looking at uh, fifty-by-three-hundred.
Okay.
So, there'd be a lot of lots there. That would be five lots they'd have to put together. And then they would have to have the room based off of the setbacks. Be kinda hard to do on that side.
What about the home that was recently built on the canal that, that encompassed multiple lots and?
Recently?
Yeah, it was, the one that's, um, it's sort of a, geez, what's this?
It's got the metal roof on it.
It's, it's, it's one of the canals, the first set of canals.
Some Raleigh or?
Yeah.
That house has been there a while. That's what y'all talking about? That big ol' long house?
Yeah.
That house has been there for six years.
Would that have complied with these setbacks?
Hmm, that complied with the old setbacks.
Right.
Yeah, but it, it would not.
'Cause I'm just trying to relate to practical.
That house probably would not, that house was over four thousand square feet. That was a big house. Roger Morton built it. You know what I'm talking about? It was real long.
I do.
That house would've fell in between those two, it would've fell into that category right there, and they would've been able to probably build that house, but they would've been limited by the square footage, they took it a full thirty percent.
Okay.
So they, yeah, so when they get, see, 'cause when you get between four and five thousand, you gotta drop back to the twenty-five percent, so the odds are, you're gonna be limited, you're not gonna be able to build a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot house in there, 'cause that twenty-five percent is gonna limit what your buildable area is. Do you follow me? Yeah. And your setbacks. See, these are just, I'm just using these, but these setbacks are gonna affect these sides, sizes too, by the way. Especially in that middle lot, which is gonna be the one, the really one that we don't want a big house built on. You, you follow what I'm saying?
Just one other, just measuring the square footage. If you've got a large, open area that's multi-floor opening, this is, do you have an artificial second story in there, or is that just part of your square footage?
Yeah, so like if you've got an open family room, and there's only part of your second story.
Oh, we have to, vaulted ceiling, and there's, in other words, it's, it's, it's a rather large footprint, but maybe not as much.
But that won't, but that won't affect the, the square footage that you get on the ground. In other words, you could build a single families, a single-story house that big, that doesn't, I'm just using two stories because.
I'm just trying to define.
By stacking them, you can get that much, but you could still build a four-thousand-square-foot house on a four hu, on a, on that fifty-by-twenty, if you could fit it in setbacks. You, you follow what I'm saying? You don't get any, if you don't use the second floor, then you don't get it. There's not a, you don't, unless it's a, a true split-level house, if it's one of those where you go in, it's open, you got the vaulted ceiling, you maybe the next part of it is, you know, half the, half of that area's got like three bedrooms, you following, the rest of it's wide open.
Yeah.
Right? Then you, then what that is.
I'm just trying to understand.
Well, what that is would be the bottom floor plus the top floor for living area, but the square footage of it would still be limited by the, do you understand what I'm saying?
And the house. So you'd have less, less livable square footage if you decided to do that, for sure.
Yeah, right.
But not if you didn't have a floor there.
But if you build, listen, I'm gonna tell you, if you build a, if you build a house, single-story with twelve-foot walls, right, and a vaulted ceiling, you're only gonna get credit for the square footage at the bottom of it, not all that floating air. So it might be pretty, but that's what you're getting.
So this, this doesn't necessarily limit the size of the footprint, it just limits the, the square footage.
It limits.
You're still gonna have, you're still gonna have a really big house sitting there that, that maybe doesn't have as much square footage as.
No, you couldn't get over impervious.
First, you'd have to fit inside the setbacks, and then you would have to, then you would have to fall within that, that.
No, I know, I understand.
But a single story is gonna be almost impossible to do to meet that kinda square footage because of the depth and the width you'd have to have to put it on that, 'cause you'd look at those lot sizes, it's a fifty-by-two-hundred, it's gonna look like a big, long trailer if you build, tried to build it. And you've got to find the room this side of the forward dune, 'cause that's where those lots like that are. And most of those frontal dunes are too close for you to find that much distance. Do, do you follow me? There's a lot of factors here that's gonna limit that, that kinda thing. But it could happen if somebody wanted to build a single story.
How do you count the, a third floor?
How do you count it?
Yeah, you know.
You just add it to it.
It's part of the footage, but not part of the footprint.
Okay.
But, but then you, you're still capped at high-high.
At thirty-one feet.
And you're also capped at the six-thousand-square-feet of moving space.
You're capped at six-thousand-square-feet of livable area. It's gonna be under roof, really.
But, that long house you're talking about has decking all the way around both floors.
Right.
So does the decking count if it's under roof?
It would be counted as the impervious area, so it would count against you on the size of the house that you can build. That lower even makes the living area smaller. So if you wanna start building these houses that are, say, five-thousand-square-feet, and then put decks all the way around it, unless they're open decks, it's gonna cause you to have to reduce the size of your house.
So covered deck then?
That's what the stormwater's part, the impervious area part covers.
So covered deck wouldn't be counted in your under-roof term, correct?
Covered deck would.
It's gonna be limited, that's where you get. Uncovered deck is.
When you're trying to go, listen, when you're trying to go bigger with these houses, right, then you're gonna be limited by how big you can go, by how much porch you want, because it's gonna get, eat up, it's gonna eat up your impervious area. For instance, that nine-thousand-square-feet's gonna be awful hard to do if you wanna have a porch. So you're gonna have to reduce it to eight-thousand, which helps us even more.
Which is how we currently calculate our camera walls, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so that's not a change.
If it's covered. But that's not a change anyway, it's the same way over here.
Right.
Over here, you, typically, they can't get a house that big, especially if they've got like, like e, large eaves and big porches, they're not getting, they're getting an impervious area that covers that, and then they gotta fit the house in there somewhere underneath it. In other words, you're not excluded, that covered porch is impervious area, and that's the thirty, and the twenty, and the twenty, so, twenty-five and twenty. So, i, this thing works, I'm telling you.
No, I know.
It'd be hard pressed to come in here and argue that you're being cheated, because you could, everybody in here can build up to almost a four-thousand-square-feet with no reduction in their storm, at all. And you can go up to some god-awful size if you can figure out how to fit it in there. You know what I mean? And then there's other parts to it. Is there any more questions about this slide? Because I really liked this slide. Now, we did do some, we did do some calculations on the reduction of, of abram taxes based off of this, and the norm would be that if you looked at it under the normal circumstances of what gets built, it's minimal. Now, if you're trying to say a camera house is gonna be big as that big house down there, then it could be as big as one-point-two, one-point-two, it was, was it billion or something like that? It was, it was.
Well, the differential couldn't be.
It wasn't, I had the number, I remember it was on my board, I don't remember what it was.
I think you did have one-point-two-billion, but that was just the cost of the structural that then you took.
That was, that's right. It was, it was, if everybody down there on the lots that we, that we found that could be built, looked at, that could have one of the big houses, was to build one of those to the maximum, then the abram taxes, those abram taxes, that would be like one-point-two-billion. But the reduction was only about thirty percent of that, which we equated to if everybody built a big one. But the, but the thing is, nobody built, built the big one, we only had one. Everybody else is falling down there somewhere between the four thousand and the four and the five thousand. So that number is really not important. You know what I mean? Especially when you compare it against the quality of life that you get from changing it.
Well, and also, anything down there is gonna be impacted by the inlet hazard area, so you'd be limited to five thousand square feet anyway, correct?
Yeah, if the new inlet hazard areas, if, once it gets out of the economic review and we get the, the, get everything with it, if it looks like the way it is, they're gonna be impacted by that, cause there's gonna be a limitation on the size of those houses. They wouldn't have been able to have the big house anyway, up there at eight, nine thousand square feet, cause they're gonna be limited. So that's what I'm saying, that number's marginal, it's just a number that you need in case somebody asks you. But the truth of the matter is, is that no one's building houses that big, which leads you to believe that, that there's not gonna be any direct deduction in averum taxes, cause we've only had one that will fall into that category. Over a ten year period, we've had one. The other one was built sometime before that. But I'm not sure it's that big. Now, that still leaves us with the bedroom issue. Filling them up with bedrooms. So, um, which is what we can't control. So, I came up with some additional possible regulations. Well, one thing is, is that our proposal does change the size of our parking to ten by twenty instead of nine by twenty. So we need to keep that in mind. But, these are some additional possible regulations. Uh, and, and I just put these in here because they popped in my mind, cause I had that stuff on my board. And me and Vicky were actually in, in my office, we were talking about it. And I brought it up to David and some other people. But buffers for, from parking, when there's more than five parking spots at a dwelling? In other words, if you're gonna have all these cars in the parking lot, then we need to have some sort of buffer between you and your next property. We already have one in the right of way, cause you're not supposed to park, like on Ocean Boulevard West, cause you're not supposed to park in it. But if you have a buffer between the two, that certainly adds to the quality of life, noise and all that stuff. Uh, another one was the ten percent, ten, ten percent of the unbuilt available area in front of the dwelling to be designated landscaping only. And, and here's why. You can now park in the setbacks. See, if you think about it, a house goes up, a regular, one of our regular houses go up to five foot from each side, so that's, that's ten feet of unbuiltable area there, right? But then you can park in it. So if we say that ten percent of the unbuiltable area, you know what I mean? Has to be designated landscaping only, and we designate what that ten percent comes from. If you say front, you know, you know, landward of the frontal dune, then that'll do a couple things, here's what I'm doing, I wanted to push the houses back a little bit, as far back as they can get them. Um, and it'll, and it'll take out their ability to use swimming pools. Swimming pools are actually considered impervious. But if, if, because it's a swimming pool there, it's not a buildable area anymore, right? So they lose parking places because of the pool, but they'll also lose those parking places in those side yard setbacks. Which in, by the way, would have reduced that over there if we'd had that over there. And that's not taken to anybody, because it's equitable all the way across. If you choose to have one of the big houses, then you're gonna use, lose that seven feet on both sides. If it's a bigger house, you're gonna lose that ten feet on both sides. But right now, if we even change that rule, we're still allowed. Now, by reducing the amount of parking, they cannot meet our ordinance for parking for bedrooms. Which means that you're not gonna be able to build eleven bedroom house, and you can't get but eight parking places. Does that make sense? We're not reducing the number of bedrooms, you can have as many as you want, as long as you got parking for them. We're saying that you got to have parking, which goes to the quality of life, the traffic, what our town can withstand, you know what I mean, and all that. So, and then, it said, this is the one that would be, I like this one, but, says parking only allowed in travel areas used for seaward most parking spots. Okay? Does that make sense? Don't make no sense.
Exactly.
Okay. So if, if, this would be for oceanfront, but if we could apply it to all of them, you understand it, right? If you, if your parking area is right there, and the farthest one you got from, from O B W is right there, then you can only park in those, that area. That would be the only, one line of parking in the, in the travel area. You couldn't park one here, one there, one there, three there, one there, one there, one there, three there. Do you follow me? You can only park in that travel area of parking. Okay? And I'll tell you what, that'll leave. Every one of them candy canes that me and Ron's got to go find this week, it's been knocked over. Now, that's a public safety issue. They've all been knocked over down there, and right now, they're all paying the dump, bump water, I guess, cause I know they're leaking. But there, if you go, when you, when y'all leave to go back, look left and right, all the candy canes that's been hit by cars. People pull it, and they're in their, they're in their yards, but they're over there on the side yard setbacks, and they run them over with their cars. Um, I haven't looked at the economic impacts of this, because I thought this was something we'd throw out there. But I think that's a good way to help with some of the congestion, is by looking at buffering for parking spots. And that, that's pretty much all I have on this. Um, I do like that set of slides there.
Are these rules pretty much all, only applicable to newly constructed homes?
Well, I would say newly constructed homes and any, anybody that wants to substantially improve their home. In other words, if you're gonna, if you're gonna improve it by more than fifty percent of what its current value is, then you would have to do this. You would have to comply with this.
But the, the parking thing in a single line seems like that would vote, that would be made for everyone, right? I mean, you wouldn't have, want people parking in the,
Well, I mean, if you wanted it, if you wanted to go back and change that, I think you could. The problem is, is if you've got a whole bunch of houses that already have bedroom, bedrooms, and the way it was written before, you only had to have so many parking places per bedroom, which is what we have now. But there was no regulations on that, so the bedrooms were built based off of no regulations. They would just become non-conforming to admit the fifty percent, and that's what I'm saying. Non-conforming is usually stepped on with the fifty percent, no matter federal, state, or local. Or the building code, you know that. Building code says you gotta, when you get to fifty percent, you gotta do a lot of things. Yep.
Is the bedroom still defined as having to have a closet?
No.
You changed, okay, I just remembered, that was an old trick back in the limited days when we, when we had septic. There were, you would have a lot that was approved for three bedrooms, and there would be miraculously two dens in this house.
Four offices.
State law, your, your state law is pretty dang on clear now.
Okay.
A bedroom is what is designated on a set of plans. Period. There is no getting around it.
Okay.
It's on a set of plans, and it says it's a bedroom. I don't have any thought yet.
If it says study, then you.
If it's a study, it's a study, it's not a bedroom. I don't get to treat it like a bedroom, and neither does anybody else. It's a, it's a, it's, it's a.
But if a house had three studies, you might.
No, you can't do nothing about it. The law was pretty clear. And then they even went further, they said you can't limit the number of bedrooms in a house. So, and closets have nothing to do with it. You can, you can, you can have a bedroom without a closet.
Do you have to have a fixed window or anything like that?
Bedrooms, bedrooms have to have emergency egress. They have to meet a minimum requirement. They have to have, first, they have to meet their egress requirements, and then they have to have emergency egress.
Right. More than one way out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Which is where they dropped the boat, where the state of North Carolina dropped the ball. They had the perfect opportunity to fix a lot of this when we had the death of the ocean out.
Yeah.
Because there's really only one way out of a two-story house when the fire's in the middle and the stairway's in the middle. Because every, no matter how big your residential dwelling is, the state of North Carolina would require you to have one main egress. That house had one that ran down through the middle of it, like most of these beach houses do. And the fire started on the second, on the first floor, and the people were on the second. Started on the bottom floor. So the window was it. So.
Well, one kid actually jumped out the window, right?
I think two of them did. But one of them did, yeah. I think one jumped out and didn't make it. I think one of them was already two, you know, he got out the window, but his buddy got him by the window, I think. Then the buddy jumped out and he was fine. But can you imagine jumping out some of them windows on some of them marsh houses in them shales? Yeah. Yeah, they dropped the ball. Those houses should have, have at least two egresses, and one of them needs to be to the exterior. Every, every room should exit to a way to get from the top to the bottom outside the structure. In other words, a set of steps leading down like decks. If it had a, if, if it had a, if it had uh, deck all the way around it, where they could have got out the window and onto the deck. But that, it was like when it, like so many of these outs.
Well, that's what we've done now.
We've got one of the best desk traps I've ever seen here. I think it might be fixed now, but it was here when I got here. We had a house down there on the second floor, had two sliding glass windows on the second floor. Not a balcony or nothing else, it's just two sliding glass doors. Second floor, you open the door, step out. That's what it looked like when I got here. I think, I think I did convince them to build something across the front of them. So now we're gonna be falling.
I must run out of money.
See, that's, I don't know how you, I don't know how that passed to you, that's gotta be a landing out there. Anyway. So now, that's it.
Um, so this, most of this conforms to what we discussed last time. Um, the changes were the side setbacks and some of the parking. And then some suggestions, some suggestions on the parking. Um, is there anything else? I don't think there are any other changes. So what would you recommend as a path forward to this if we decided to do it?
What I would do is, we probably need to, uh, well, I don't know what I just did. But anyway, um, I would think that what we probably need to do is, um, it's a land use thing. It's in the manus. I would say the planning board needs to tell us that they want it put into a, uh, in the text form. Put it in the ordinance book. We'll then send it to the attorney, have them review it. And then we'll bring it back to y'all to, or we can bring it back to y'all to review and then send to the attorney. That's what I would do. And then, if y'all want to approve it, then pass it on to the board. To the board, and they can give it its blessing, and we can put it in the ordinance form.
I think it's premature to solicit public.
You would have to do it twice. You're gonna do it once when y'all, we'll have a public hearing once, because it's a land use thing. When it comes here for your review. And then it'll go to the board, and the board will say they, they would like to see it in ordinance form, and then it'll happen again. So they'll have two chances to have input into this. Two chances. And we'll advertise it, extend the solution, we'll get, we'll get it out there. It, it's, it's a road. But it'll get out there. This'll get out there because we'll, we'll, we'll hand deliver it to a lot of the real estate people, to the contractors, to the people that it, they'll get it first, they'll be here for every meeting. Yeah. And those are the whole lots, or, you know, you gotta prep yourself, cause the ones that owns lots are gonna see it as a, you know, and they may have a valid point, you might need to listen to it, but.
Sure.
Yeah, they, they may rush to build.
Well, you know, they, they may rush to build, but, you know, building here seems to be based off of lot sales and, you know what I mean? And, and what kind of economic return you get off of it. I'm not so sure unless you're in the business of. We've got one builder that might do that, yes. But the rest of them are not.
How will this, how will this, uh, apply to multifamily?
It won't apply, that doesn't apply to, it, it won't apply to multifamily. The next slides that we're gonna see is gonna apply to that. What's coming up next will apply to that. Which is the commercial stuff, I think that's on there too. Yeah. We'll see how it's.
So, next up would be then for, um, if everyone, we had a majority in favor of this, we'd be asking you to bring this back to us in text format, correct?
We'll put it in the, we'll put it, we'll make it look just like the ordinance and bring it back to you. Yeah. And you may want some other information with it, or you may wanna look up your own information and come to your own conclusions, you know what I mean? But you may wanna tweak it and play with it and see what it does. This is what y'all ask, this is what y'all decided at the last board that y'all want me to bring back, and that's what I brought back to you, so. You know what I mean? But I would, I would recommend, I, this is the best one. It's the reason I like it. I like the, that better than any of the rest I've said. Saying you just can't build but a five thousand square foot house appears to me to be inequitable. This does not, for many reasons.
So you, I'm gonna ask you again, you feel very good if I won't put your plate out?
I, I feel, I feel like that, that this holds muster. I don't think it's going to, cause the person, you can build, you, you, you literally can build a bigger house on the west end than you can on one of our standard lots. Much bigger, almost twice as big. Seriously. And that's, I don't see how that's taking of anybody's property. In other words, if I come to this town, if I wanna build a house that's thirty-nine hundred square feet, or three thousand square feet, then I can pick a standard lot. Right? If I came to this beach and wanted to build one that was four to five thousand square feet, then I would have to pick the lot that would let me build it. You know what I mean? And if I wanna build one bigger, then I would have to go find one that allowed me to build the bigger one. There's nothing unequitable about that. If I bought one of these lots, right? Say, ten years ago, right? And the town has decided that for public safety, life, health and welfare, you know what I mean, and for other reasons, that they need to reduce the house size for my big lot, then they just didn't do it to me, they did it to all lots, starting from the small one to the large one. No one was singled out. I think it's, I think it's more than arguable that it's, that it's equitable.
That's a good point.
Yeah. It actually all goes back to what you said. You're the one that got me thinking about it, Bob. When you said, I don't understand why you just can't say you can't build a house thirty-six thousand square feet. And if you say that, you know what I mean, then it applies to everybody, big or small. You just gotta make it fit in the property. That's what I did. You, you said it twice last week, and it resonated with me.
Somebody did, wanna do, what's your question?
Should we vote on whether we wanted?
Somebody would need to make a motion that said they want to, or you guys can say we don't want to do this, whatever. Which one is it?
I, I can make a motion that we move forward and ask Tim to come up with the ordinance version.
So.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passed unanimously.
Let's see if I can.
We'll ask Tim to bring that back next month as a, in ordinance format.
I think, uh, in, in, in voting to proceed, I think we all recognize that we still need to run this through access to the full public, including builders and property owners, uh, to have a say. But there, there's no harm in proceeding with this, at this course.
You can actually have a public hearing. Board can decide whether they wanna have a public hearing before the, we even unveil the new park, you know what I mean? In ordinance form. Invite the public to come in. We can do exactly like we did with the L U P if you wanted to. Public could come in and make as many comments as they want. We'll let them freely make comments, we can write down their concerns or whatever, and then carry those back when we, when you start to redo it again. And then you'll still have to have the official public hearing before y'all approve it. And then it'll go before the board, and there'll be another public hearing. There'll be no, there'll be no way that nobody won't know what you're doing. You, you follow what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. Well, and I honestly think none of us wanna put something in our place that's gonna harm the island, so.
Us having a public hearing is probably a good idea. And also open up a potential series of litigation that's not even necessary to go through, so that's.
But, uh, what do you guys think? To me, it seems like it's best to have it put in an ordinance format first, so that people can read the actual.
Well, I, I would, I would never recommend writing an ordinance and then approving it without the ordinance actually being in ordinance form. We've never done that, you know that, I've never done that, not it being in ordinance form before the public saw it the first time. No one should be voting on anything the public hadn't seen in its entirety.
Well, it just seems like it's more, um.
Cause some of that, even in the slide presentation, is subject to some interpretation that might question, like, I'm still a little bit confused about that, when you were talking about side lot parking and stuff like that. I got lost a little bit in that, but I, so if you see something in written ordinance form, then it generally is fairly clear.
You can study it better.
Scripted.
And, and I think I know what your definition of travel area is, but what's travel area?
Huh? What's travel area?
Yeah.
Well, in, 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 there's actually a definition in the building code, I guess I could pull that out. But the travel area would actually be like, if your garage is there.
Yeah.
Right? It's a two-car garage. And your driveway starts here and goes there, that's the travel area.
That's what I thought.
And that would be the only area you can park. A lot of, some divisions don't let you park on your own grass.
Yeah.
You have to park in that travel area.
Okay, that's what I thought, but that's what makes your, some.
That's travel area. So if you have, uh, if you have, uh, uh, one of those houses like these over here that go all the way out to the side, but you still got five feet of setbacks, remember, that's one more parking place. Five feet, they're ten feet wide. That's one more parking place. Well, actually, it could be two, depending on how far you are, twenty-five feet.
But it would exclude things like, um, little turnarounds, right?
Yeah, we, what we would say is, is that, you know, that's not in the travel distance, it doesn't matter if they put it in or not, it's not in the travel path.
So you can have it, it just couldn't be.
The fact that you wanna make a turnaround in your front yard is not in the travel path. I mean, the travel path is from here to there.
So you just can't park in.
Yeah.
It doesn't count towards your parking.
That's right. They could use it to turn around and go there, come back in, but it would just be that travel.
I have a question for you, Tim. It's a, it's a what if, but in my house, there's two sides that you can park under either side. We only park under one side, but we could drive through the yard and get to the other side and park cars there. But we could drive through the yard and get to the other side and park cars there. Does that mean that our travel path goes through the front yard, around to the other side of that?
Well, I think that in order to establish a travel, a travel path, then you would have to have an open area on both sides that designates that travel path.
Oh, so it would be two, like, we've got the fence, so it would be two opens in the fence, I see.
Yeah, exactly right. A lot of places now, you, you, y'all don't know, but everybody figures out a way to get around everything. And the way people are getting around our available parking on the side streets now is because you can't park in driveways. And so they're making their driveways the full width of their, which would also, we could stop that too, because that's, that's affecting stormwater and everything else. Because now we got those five-foot buffers or ten-foot buffers, seven-foot buffers. I'm telling you, this, this thing works for us in the long run. There's not a thing that's being discussed down in town that this wouldn't help. That wouldn't help. I'm telling you, it would help.
What kind of penalties would there be? Would it be a citation or?
Go in and get a building permit. And then if you violated it, we'd send you a, it's a fifty-dollar fine, I think, when you don't have enough parking places. There's a letter we send, yeah.
We make sure they have enough before you issue a permit. Then after that, if we, we would send them a violation, but.
So one of my concerns is that if you have guests who are, and your house is built, uh, house, three parking spaces, and you've got two, two cars come visit, and you don't have room for those cars, what happens then? They just have to go park somewhere else and get shuttled in?
They can park a right away right now.
Yeah, you can park on a right way.
If you're not on motion board.
I'm thinking of my house, cause I have guests who can park in the line of.
Well, you can't park in the right way at your house anyway. You're limited, you're more limited in your parking already than say, you. You can have a whole bunch of friends over right now that you can't have, because you can't park in the right way. So we're not taking anything away from you, you don't already have. You're less than him already.
But in this situation though, when his friends come over, they could park in his front yard, it just wouldn't be counted towards when he got a building permit. They could park temporarily in his front yard, right?
That's right.
Okay.
It just, whenever you got a.
What we're trying to do, what, here, here, I think what you're doing is, and I, that's a good way to put it. You really clarified it. What we're trying to do is what? We're trying to limit how, and how many people are in that house. We are saying that you're not gonna be able to build a rental that has fifteen bedrooms in it, you know what I mean?
I got you.
And park all over everywhere.
Okay.
Cause that's what's happening now. I mean, you go out there in the summertime, you know, we're all worried about parking down there and down here. Oh my God, that house in front of, I hope they do it this year, cause I've been bringing everybody's attention, that little house is in front of the, of the pier down there. I, I know they come, I, I, you know, I don't wanna point any fingers, but they gotta come from someplace like where I live, you know what I mean? And there must be forty-three people that sit out in front of that house in each. You, you know what I'm talking about, don't you? And there's cars parked everywhere, they're on the sidewalk everywhere. And, and, you know what I mean? That's the kinda stuff we're trying to limit. Don't wanna stop that. We don't wanna stop the guy that lives here full-time, has friends, has a, has a, has a party, you know what I mean? Has kids, he having a playdate or something.
Right. Tim, before you get to this, great job on explaining all the other stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent slide, Tim.
As always. I like that slide.
Really good. Okay, so we are resolved then on the, on this, you're going to put it in ordinance format and bring it back to us, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, this is going to, we're gonna end up putting this in the residential section.
Are you doing R1 and R2 or just R1?
We're gonna do R1. R2 will be covered on the commercial section.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're fixing to talk about R2, uh, yeah, well, cause R2 really should go in commercial, not in residential. The reason we recognize it as being residential in an R1 is because it's allowed everywhere in this town, and most people will discuss that someday, but.
And what's R2?
Multifamily.
Multifamily.
In, R2 in our ordinance book, just so nobody gets confused, is multifamily. R2 is a whole different monster. Part of it is that, but it's a whole different monster in the building code. So, and we run into that all the time. People get confused about town ordinances and building codes, and R2 is a, could be a real bad thing if you pay attention.
Um, I may suggest it. Has anybody reached out to Pete? Cause my guestie thinks this means it's four.
We had, I had Maddie calling and it went to voicemail, but she left you a message.
Okay, okay.
She was leaving a message.
Yeah, we do as best we can, Pete.
Well, we had, you were there, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, I made some notes, but I can give them.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I'll, I'll tell you, I can tell you what, what, what needs to be done. I mean.
Okay.
I, I'm real.
Maybe he'll get the message and.
Yeah, we'll see. Anyway, uh, I don't know that you, the message that he, the, what they did is public record.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not really sure he needs to come and give a report, but it's public record. Um, unless that's what you want him to do. You want him to give a report.
Um, let's see if he comes.
Okay, well, y'all wanna move into this or do?
Yeah, it's ahead on the agenda anyway, so.
Yep.
Uh, what was I doing here? I forgot.
Commercial.
Yeah, we're, this is, this is kind of a, a staff saying, it's time we fix this, 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 this needs to be fixed. Um, what this is, is that this is, uh, me going through the other stuff, looking at stuff and realizing that, that we have the potential for real issues here in the town. And one of the first issues that I can tell you is, is that unless we change our rules, then there's a possibility that if you, you're one of those people who, who built in a C1, in a commercial district, if you built your house in a commercial district, cause it was allowed, then you could end up at a restaurant right on top of you. You know what I mean? With that weird parking, right on top of you, within five feet. Front, I mean, sides and rear, okay? There's nothing to limit someone from sticking a commercial structure right next to your residential house. Totally, totally not the norm anywhere in North Carolina for some reason. Commercial is always have bigger setbacks and for more than one reason, and buffers, for, for quality of life, especially from residential. So, we, I went through it, we looked at it, me and, me and Rhonda went through it and looked at it, we discussed it, and I came up with some text amendments I thought would help. As we go through them, I, I'll kinda explain to you why they should be there. This is a culmination of my experience, uh, of, of information that I've known and used in other municipalities, as many as three of them. And I can tell you that our stuff was not, I don't know how it got written that way, or why it got written that way, but I feel sure that we don't li, wanna leave it that way. Number one is, a lot of commercial construction structures couldn't be built in those setbacks. The building code will not allow them to be built in those setbacks unless you meet minimum requirements. And in our fire district, it was easy and gonna be harder, cause we, we're loaded with wood frame construction. Which means they would've had to done a whole lot of protection and that kinda stuff. Well, you don't wanna allow it anyway, you, you know what I mean? Because you're just asking for it. I'll give you an example. The building code is not gonna allow you to build a multifamily dwelling in a commercial district unless it has a twenty-foot road on both sides of it. Right, gotta get a fire truck, front, rear and back. Our ordinance don't, says you can, if somebody was to build it to that, we're creating a problem that the building code does not allow you to create it. Do you follow me? We're given the impression that you could build this, and then you can't get to it for fire suppression, you won't be able to meet the minimum fire code or the minimum building code. You gotta have those things. Nothing else, you gotta have dead-end road that they can turn around on one side or the other. Depending on how big the building is, they gotta be able to go around it. So, uh, that's, that's just an example, okay? And we don't need to be irresponsible with our rules that lead people to believe that they can, when really they probably couldn't anyway. So, the old ordinance, it says, everybody does know that our ordinance allows everything in commercial, pretty much. Residential, the whole nine yards. Um, which, I'm not so sure that's so good either, but anyway. Um, and we might wanna take a look at that in the future as well. But that would only require a text amendment to remove one P from one column and take one paragraph out. But that's something we'll get out later. Uh, "Commercial district is established as the district in which a variety of sales and service facilities may be provided to the general public, and the specific intent is to encourage the construction of and the continued use of land and building for commercial services uses that are compatible with the family beach character of Holden Beach and serve to enhance the service available, uh, available to residents and visitors. All commercial activities shall be conducted from a permanent structure shall comply with the town's noise ordinance and meet or exceed the parking requirements of this chapter." Which means that every single merchant association thing we ever had was illegal. Anyway, I'm just throwing it up there. Cause that doesn't say it has to come out of a permanent structure. All right, we don't allow open vending in the town, it's like a mount station. Me and Rhonda stop them all the time. Can't sell the watermelons out of bag in a truck. All right, you refer to the table of the permitted uses, and that's where you'll find other information that tells you what's allowed and where it's allowed. And I don't have that up here because it's really not relevant to what we're about to do.
But this is what, where residential use is a permitted use, which we may wanna look at.
It, it, it says P in that little chart that could be looked at. Uh, so, the dimensional requirements are, for C1, you have, the original was front yard, the minimum required setbacks were twenty-five feet. You can have a commercial building right on top of the street, well, even the county's overlay zone requires you to be a hundred and fifty feet away. Anything along the main thoroughfare has to be a hundred and fifty feet away. That's why that building doesn't bear it's being built right now. And all those newer-looking buildings that's on the causeway out there are so far off the road. So even the county's overlay zone is, is three times as much as what, what I'm recommending, which is at fifty feet, okay? Uh, side yards, minimum required is five feet now. Open porch steps are overhinged and not be within five feet of the property line, so it's basically five-foot setbacks. Well, that's nothing. That's commercial, that's nothing. It's literally, you literally got someone washing pans in your backyard or in your side yard. You're literally smelling the waste from a waste receptor right there in your backyard. Even with our system now, you still have to have grease interceptors. Nobody wants to smell that. You need buffers. You need, you need stuff to, I, I'll just give you some examples and stuff, but, you know, do you want, uh, someone going up a set of metal stairs five feet from your bedroom window at three o'clock in the morning to get in that commercial building? I thought, do you? You could need buffering. So, the side yard minimum required should be twenty feet. I recommend twenty feet. Open porch steps and other areas shall not encroach into the established setbacks. Side yard setback, minimum requirement shall be ten feet where landscape buffering meets the requirements of one fifty-seven point oh six two. I added stuff into one fifty-seven point oh six two. All right, it says, oh crap, it says, rear yard, the minimum required five feet, except that if commercial use of butts of residential district, there shall be a rear yard of twenty feet. Well, folks, that, we, we allow C1. I mean, we allow residential and commercial. That says, if you've got a residential building, you can back it up five feet, if you're in a commercial zone, to your neighbor in the rear yard setback. That's a missed, that needs to come out of there and quick.
Yeah.
Okay? And then it says, I, I, I recommend the rear yard be a minimum required twenty-five feet and landscape buffering is required. Okay, which means you gotta put something up there to buffer you from whatever's there. Now, obviously, you wouldn't need something if you're backing up to the ocean from. You wouldn't be able to, or you couldn't, but the whole ocean's a pretty good buffer, you know what I mean? So. All right, I think this is the end. Building, did I get it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Building constructed, constructed or converted to commercial use after the effective date of this chapter shall provide off-street parking and loading spaces as required by one fifty-seven point oh seven five through one fifty-seven point oh eight eight of this chapter. Don't know how you were gonna get all that in there with no setbacks, but I guess it was required. Says, "All signs and billboards must meet the requirements set forth in one fifty-seven point oh seven nine of this chapter. A building height, no building should exceed the maximum height of thirty-one feet measured from the design flood elevation to the highest point of the structure." So no, no commercial building's gonna be higher than our residential structures based off of the design flood elevation. Lot coverage driveways, we changed that, by the way, years ago. Lot coverage driveways, parking lots, parking spaces, parking areas, patios and similar areas and services located outside of the building footprint shall be gravel, grass, or of an approved purview product. Required buffers must have the required, the required approved landscaping. And then, we, we talk about the screening for the HVAC equipment and that kinda stuff, that's all good. Solid waste disposal containers to be screened, screening for solid waste disposal shall be comparable material and color destructions of accessory tube, and the heights of the screen shall be equal to or greater than the heights of the can, container being screened, and the width, and goes on and on. This is actually a, oh, and then it talks about a concrete pad with drain to a sanitary sewer or dry well is required, uh, by North Carolina State Board of Health. That doesn't apply anymore. That's for onsite wastewater, we don't have septic tanks anymore. So we could probably take that out. That needs to come out. Says, "The opening shall have a gate or slot that can be, be held in place while being serviced." That's for the grease interceptors, and they are still required. So we'll, we'll take that health department part out of there. Um, outside material storage, you know, that's kinda commonplace stuff. But it says, "The outside storage shall be within a fully enclosed accessory structure or shall be screened from view of all adjacent properties in the street or wideway by perpetually maintained vegetative buffer or fence of comparable material and color that matches the primary structure." Okay, so that's, that's pretty, that's in line with what we're trying to do. Don't know how you got buffers in there when you didn't have no land to start off with. But I guess they were planning on doing it somehow. And then the sidewalks are required, um, and then there's really not a whole lot more there. And then this is that section that talks about the landscaping. Said, "Landscaping required. All commercial structures shall have landscaping installed by the property owners to soften the impact of the bare walls to adjacent property and streets." That's the way it was left before. It said, "Areas required to be landscape buffered under one fifty-seven point oh sixty-two, C through one through three," which is that other part up there, "shall be a minimum of six feet high on the sides of the property with spacing no less than three feet, and buffering must be maintained so as to be perpetual in its functioning for the life of the use." Which means you can't plant it and then mow it down, you know what I mean, once you get your, your permit. And so, that's the recommended, that's the changes that I recommend. We might wanna go deeper into it at some point, but that's the recommended change. What that does is, is that gives us buffers between residential. We have C1 sitting in the middle of residential. And that gives us a buffer for those residents that built houses that are paying, because we're the family beach, family-friendly beach. You know what I mean? We don't wanna, we don't want all that right on top of us. We wanna keep it a little bit more organized. This looks more like what you'll see in the other cities and towns. You might not go have those no setbacks, I can promise you.
And this would apply to?
Commercial.
Commercial, but also to multi?
Multifamily is commercial. Yeah, condominiums are commercial. The fact that people were allowed to build stuff over here that didn't meet any criteria in the past has not been allowed in ten years. You can't build a, a, what they called a duplex over here. Own, have two people own the interior, the interior with no dividing property line, and then designate, have no designation who takes care of the outside property, other than by legal document. Did you follow me? That's not a, that, that is, that is a commercial construction, structure in its finest. If you want, if you don't believe me, try and put a pool there, cause the North Carolina Department of Health is gonna tell you that you gotta meet the same requirements as a hotel. Cause that's, nothing about that meets the single-family dwelling. A, a, a two-family dwelling, or a townhouse, which is what it actually is, requires the property line to be separated and the construction to be separated by a minimum fire-rated wall on the property line. And then, everybody that owns this side of the, the dwelling owns the lot and the property on this side, and everybody that owns this side owns the lot and the property on this side. And all amenities, electrical, plumbing, all of it is separated, from the roof to the foundation, okay? We get confused here because someone allowed people to build structures that were not separated from, from the ground up, did not have property lines, and to build them like townhouses. That type of structure is not defined anywhere in the planet except for in, you know, some made-up term. And the way, what they did was, they were so good at it till attorneys were writing documents that defined who owned what inside the structure. And now what's happening is, as the years have gone along, real estate agents can't sell them because banks won't loan you money on the interior of a dwelling when you don't own the outside, there's no property line separating them. A lot of folks, one of the owners is having to buy out the other one, and then they're having to turn them into two-family dwellings just by simply taking out the center sections and not dividing them. Because a lot of them had the, like, the plumbing was tied together, electrical was run through all of them, you know what I mean? From one to the other. They didn't meet any criteria. So we get confused when we talk about it here, but multifamily dwellings are commercial.
But, but this change would, would likely, particularly the duplex, would make them unecon, uneconomical to build.
No, they, they would build multifamily dwelling, would fit nicely into that, those setbacks, uh, like a four-unit condominium.
Multi-unit, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What they built here confuses everybody. It ends up being a long educational thing by me to try to explain it every time. So badly wrong until it's hard to quantify it.
But the existing multi-unis there along Ocean Boulevard are not in compliance with particular.
No, the ones down here are actually multifamily. They're built to commercial standards. Don't mind the ones down here.
They have, they have, that one side, side set, do they do twenty feet on each side of those?
No, 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 they don't comply with that.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they don't.
Yeah, you got, you got like a whole set of condominiums down there. That's running right up to the property line like everybody else.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, and the whole front is concrete, pan, yeah.
I had a question about, um, we talking with our land use plan, and I think in our ordinances too, we talk about, um, multi-use. Then we're gonna promote multi-use, which I know is a big bad, um, a big, a big use. It seems to have fallen out of favor in some areas, but, um, it's never caught on here. I don't think we have any.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to have some too. Yeah, but.
How would that affect?
Like where the shop owner lives above the shop.
Yeah, right. Awful hard, awful difficult to build. Hard to build, expensive to build that, that, that kinda construction. The building code gonna weigh down real tough, yeah.
So I, I guess then my question is more, um, should we be looking at that with land use plan? And discussing that we don't really wanna highlight and promote it?
Multi-use?
Yes.
Well. You know, he works out his ass. Yeah, you're, you're thinking, you're, you're thinking.
I'm thinking not.
When you, when you, when you use the word multi-use.
Yes.
In a zoning sense, right?
I'm thinking.
You're talking about, you're talking about what he's doing, which. You're talking about, you're talking about what he's doing, which shouldn't, you know, you, you're gonna wanna say, uh, twenty-five percent can be dedicated to, you know what I mean, to a home occupation or something like that.
Well, that would make it his house commercial, correct?
No, not if you say that twenty-five percent of his house can be used for a home business or workout his house or something like that. Yeah, that, that, that doesn't change anything. In fact, he wants to have a study in his house.
Uh, yeah, I'm not referring to, to kinda what he's, I'm, I'm talking about where you've got the, um, retail on the bottom, and above it, you've got condos.
Yeah, really hard to do.
Okay.
Really hard to do. It's expensive to do. Um, don't know if you can do it in our fire district or not. Probably, I can. Be hard to find a place.
Okay, just wondering.
But, yeah, it'd be so expensive to have a mermaid tile above it. Or the other way around, either way, be very expensive. Yeah, I can't, I can't.
There's not much of a market for it.
Yeah, cause you, 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 the, what it would cost to build that structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a big time development. Yeah, big time development, like around Lake Norman or something like that.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about using every page of a five, uh, fifteen-hundred-page code book to build it though.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it would be very expensive. The architects, the materials you'd have to use, yeah, everything would have to be non-combustible.
Yeah, everybody their money.
Cause nobody cares about the mermaid tile, but the people in there's gotta be protected.
Gotcha.
Yeah. That type of structure would even be limited to what you could put on the walls in the mermaid tile.
ADA compliant and all that.
Yeah. Yes. Which is why I don't think we'll ever see another clubhouse here, how this, we got some of this stuff we got. Cause it was, it's been nineteen seventy-three. But if you, if you build a clubhouse here and made it out, unless it was like the long one down there, if you build a lot of these clubhouses like over there?
Yeah.
You'd have to wrap the handicap, have to wrap around it four times.
What's the, uh, what's the house next to the convenience store down there? The one that?
It's a clubhouse.
That's a clubhouse. The one that rebuild every three days? Yeah. I never seen a building get rebuilt so many times. They work on that building every year. They must get a tax deduction off of it or something.
It's next to the, to the, you know, there's like three.
Next to general store.
Between the trailers, uh, the, the campground and.
It's a clubhouse.
There's three lots in there, two houses and a clubhouse.
First thing, first thing that we did when we went in, we made, threw a whole bunch of fire suppression in, it was a clubhouse, and then had it built like a house. That was the first time.
Then there was one on the right that they bought to convert, and y'all stopped it, and they end up having to sell it, right?
Yes.
That's possible. I do that a lot. I do something I'm not supposed to do, I stop it, yeah. But sometimes they have to sell it. Sometimes they come and say things are wrong, and Ron and Mason's out. See what happens.
Poor, poor Ron.
Ron, Ron takes them out.
So, is there anything else related to this commercial, that we, the ordinances we need to do? You mentioned, they, you said somebody could build on a commercial lot.
Well, let's get, let's, I'll give you an example. If I wanted to build a motel right now, I could build it within five feet of that, if, if, well, I'll just give you an example, the pier down there.
No, I, I got, I got you, we're going on to five. I'm talking about, is there anything, is there anything else? I mean, like, you said it was okay to build a house in a commercial?
That's right.
Problem, a commercial zone area.
Right, that's what our ordinances.
Should we change that? I mean, or?
I, I, I think y'all need to take a look at it, need to take a hard look at it. I'm not sure why, you know, I don't know why we would allow residential to be built in a commercial area, because why you would have it permitted use when it could simply rezonate?
Yeah.
In other words, why are you allowing someone to just, and it's the same way, the other way around, because here's why. We're literally telling someone, I'm gonna tell you what I think the problem is with it, I think, I'm not gonna fault you, this is what struck me. We now allow residential and commercial, okay? So, the guy, person comes, and we allow it, they build a residential dwelling here and a residential dwelling there. And let's just say it happened before we changed this, now the guy wants to build commercial. Well, we literally encouraged them to build in an area that was gonna be a problem. Gonna create a problem, because we can't deny the commercial. And they built in it because we permitted it. Do you follow what I'm saying? And now, we've got residential dwellings, which is not uncommon, but there's always a buffer. You go to any town, you'll see a buffer unless it's an old district, but there's gonna be a buffer, and there's a reason for that. Now, they can argue that they never knew that so-and-so could be built there, out of ignorance, but they could argue that. And that they shouldn't have been allowed to build where something like that could be built later. If it's a, not a permitted use, and they own a commercial lot, then they can come and rezonate to make it where they can build a residential dwelling. There is no arguing that you didn't know that you were building in an area that way it could be commercial. You chose to rezonate. The, the, you understand what I'm saying?
But that doesn't protect them from the lot next to them being zoned commercial.
Well, it does, but at the same time, they made the choice to go from that zoning to residential instead of just being permitted. There is no deniability. Right now, they have some, I guess plausible deniability, they didn't know what could actually be next door.
I think this is, like, the issue that we just sent back on exceptions to, I, I don't know why this board could not hear requests to have it done and at least run it through, and apply levels of consistency and the like, and, and, and I think it would also broaden the understanding of the, of the prospective buyer to the process too, the, the, I think the risk, the, you know, the potential risk would be elevated, and I just think it's.
I mean, you can, you can literally make it, we are rezoning this, but you need to understand that you're about to build a house in a commercial district.
Well, I also think we have an obligation to maintain some ability for commercial properties to be built here. And if we're, we're not careful, we're gonna eliminate all of them, we'll be a, a resident-only.
Well, now, now, at the same time, there's nothing to stop anybody from coming here and buying a large tract of land and rezoning it commercial. You're not discouraging anything. Money, money will get you if, if it meets the criteria. If they come in here and say they wanna rezonate, and it meets the criteria of our minimum requirements of our zoning, then the board can approve it or not approve it. So, if the planning board decides we need more commercial, and we're encouraging commercial, and somebody comes in here and wants to buy twenty houses and have a strip of commercial, if the planning board, which is your job, decides that would be a good idea, then you could approve the zoning. See, I think you're missing the point, that you're important, and you're here for a reason to recommend these kinds of things. We just don't have a whole lot going on here, so y'all don't understand that your primary function is to look out for these various things. Your job is to keep this the family beach, you know what I mean? Or, if we need four drugstores or something in the future, then it's your job to guide the town that way, and what help best, you know, mold it to that through the decisions that y'all make. And one of them may be that we need more commercial, and when someone applies for it, you can approve it.
Where do we have commercial districts to do it?
I can tell you.
Here, down by the pier.
Yeah, there's not very many, you know.
There's, um, some oceanfront at Holden Street.
Yep, there it is.
Um, Canal Drive at Berry Insurance. Um, there's a little thing there. Um, Quentin to Rothschild, except for part of the oceanfront has got some residential in it. Um, the pier store area, that area down there. Um, and then, we still have that outstanding piece that we're still not quite sure of, um, six twenty-nine to six fifty-three.
Right. There's a weird piece down there that we have, we have it zoned as residential on our map, but the county has it zoned as.
As commercial.
Commercial, but our map stands, there's no.
That's where that old, excuse me, but isn't that where the trailer park was and the old Mrs. Devine?
Uh, I think it's on the other side of the road. Isn't it on, on the?
Not on oceanfront.
No, it's on the even side. I, I think it is.
That's before my time here. I just know that when I looked at the map, I see it.
Macy's, Macy's used to have a front of park, and KG did.
Yeah.
You remember KG? Did you know KG?
My grandmother was married to KG's, oh!
Oh, okay. Anyway. KG was, KG was a character, I, I knew him. But anyway, the, it, she's talking, what she's talking about, I think it's on the other side. Yeah, ours is on the mar side that's mislabeled.
No, there's stuff on the oceanfront.
Then, then it's, then it's that, it's the trailer park.
I saw it in the land use map, when y'all was the land use map, and wondered why it would just go like that when it's full of houses.
Yeah. Well, it's because, and it may still be commercial, because you could build a residential dwelling in a commercial lot.
Exactly, right, right. So, in theory, if it were commercial, in theory, you could buy one of those houses and.
The planning board could literally rezonate.
But right now, somebody could take one of those houses, if it were, let's say it was commercial, turn that into a bar.
That's right, right next, right in the middle of the rest of them.
Put a big deck on the back, right on the oceanfront, right?
I think that's intended, the original code. I think that's what they, their intent, their intentions were. Like, if you want to start a business here, you've got a house in the oceanfront? Good for it. I think, that's what it reads like. It's the same requirement as a house.
Well, it, that, that's funny, because I see it the other way, that we allow residential everywhere that's commercial, so that people would build houses instead of commercial. We don't allow commercial and residential, but we do allow residential and commercial.
But if you didn't change, if you didn't change, if you built a resident on a commercial, you could change that into a restaurant or bar anytime you wanted to.
Right, right.
As a house, I mean, there's lots of restaurants that are in houses, right?
If this thing went through, you would have to pretty much knock down the structure if it were, cause it wouldn't have this, it wouldn't have the side setbacks or anything like that.
This would discourage that from happening.
Right, but right now, that's a risk.
Right.
For Ben and breakfasts?
Absolutely. I don't know if Ben and breakfasts.
It's not that easy, just to turn them into something. It's not that easy to take a house and turn it into a business like that. That's, it's not that easy.
I guess so back to, I guess the original point that I was making, if we're gonna go through and modify this ordinance, I think we should seriously consider requiring residents in commercial zones not to be automatic, but to have to go through, um, a public hearing.
Oh, well, you, now, if you, uh, so you don't wanna, you don't wanna take them out of a permitted use, but you wanna have them, wanna make them have a conditional use permit? That's what he said.
Well, no, I mean, what they have to do is come through.
He said he could rezonate.
They have to go through a rezoning request.
Make them not a permitted use.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so we want to change that right now, while we're changing other stuff.
That could be potentially controversial, but I think it's something.
Well, this is good, this is just like the other thing, y'all decide to do it, then I'll tweak it some more, and we'll change that, and then, you know, we'll need to do a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, y'all will decide whether or not to send it to more commissioners. You'll have to have consistency statement.
Got it.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Okay, so, um.
This was, as I understood it, Tim, this matter is even a little more urgent than the big house matter.
Well, I mean, it's according to what you think is urgent, you know what I mean?
Right, that's right.
But, you know, we don't have a whole lot of people building big houses, but we could have a.
Yeah, I mean, all of a sudden, you're.
Well, we got a piece of property that's for sale out there, that could be a potential, you know what I mean? But you, you can't change, you're not rezoning nothing, I can tell you that, so you're not doing anything illegal. Yeah. And we don't have any applications, we have no open applications whatsoever. So, but, you never know, I mean, my greatest fears is that there would be a thirty-one-foot tall motel there. And we don't have any, we don't have anything that pushes them off the road, we don't have anything, talk about parking, you know what I mean? We just don't have stuff like that, so. How about a parking deck? Wouldn't that be nasty? Somebody would put a parking deck there, right up to both sides of property line.
Yeah.
I've had a question for you, Tim. Is it necessary that the parking must be, the setback has to be from the road so far as to permit parking on the front of the building?
No, you can park behind the building. The problem is here, is that most of our areas that are commercial, that are on the oceanfront, are gonna have a frontal boom run up to the back door. While the lot line may extend far enough back that they can build all the way up to the edge of it for the setbacks, there's nowhere to park, can't park back there. But the biggest problem is, is that in a commercial district, or wherever you've got commercial, you don't want, it's very dangerous to have your buildings right on top of the, the. The road. You, you need to have a parking area, room for them to move around. You're gonna have to have entrance and exits, but whenever you have, you know what I mean? Right on top of the road, you're limited.
Beach-going pedestrian experience. You're not having to walk through a parking lot to get to a store, you know?
And you just, and, and listen.
What would you?
You're not killing the world, you're not killing, by writing these new rules, you remember, if somebody don't like the rules, or if they're creating a hardship, then they can go to the Board of Adjustments and ask for relief. When you write a rule, you're not, you're not laying down the law for eternity. Do, do you follow me? And if it's a specific case, where we may have created a hardship, then they can come ask for relief.
Okay.
What do you, what were you envisioning? Parking in the rear? And closer, um, and closer to the road?
Uh, yeah, parking maybe adjacent to the road, like, uh, angled parking, or parallel parking, or something like that, um, as opposed to a lot, you know? Some, so the parking acts as a buffer between the traffic and the sidewalk, basically.
That's already in there, how you have to park.
And maybe even landscape buffering in there too, but, um, just so, like, when I stop at general store, I often see people walking down the beach side, there's no sidewalk, and they're just kind of, I guess I can walk here.
Yeah, you, you need to read, you need to read what we have in place for the parking ordinance and stuff, some of that stuff you're saying is already in there.
Okay.
Um, there's a place that has sidewalks too.
Yeah, sidewalks are required.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we have them, they gotta, if we don't have them, they have to put them in.
But if they're, if it's.
If they're already there, then, then they, if they damage anything, they have to fix them.
Okay, so, um, you want a roadmap at force? How do you see this going?
You could send this, you could send this up to the board, um, and the board can greenlight it for an ordinance if they want to. Um, but then we'll still have to go through the public hearing and all that. Uh, you do have to do the consistency statement on this text amendment, because it's already done in that form, but it's gotta go to them first, for them to give it the go-ahead to then be made into an ordinance.
And they've gotta do their own consistency statement.
Right, they have to do their own thing.
Um, so, which pleasure?
Can I make a movement, uh, to have Tim go back and make the revisions he discussed about the Board of Health, what kind of Board of Health statement removed? And the amendment, I think that he was talking about, about the setbacks and... Can we, can we quickly review that, that we talked about? It's on the first page, I think.
What do you want to review?
Just the changes that you suggested. One was the board of health, and there was, I thought there was another one that you...
Oh, yes, so it's...
Oh, to take out the, um...
Residential commercials.
Right, yeah, no residential and commercial zones.
Right, that didn't have that sign up there. There, there's a chart in our zoning code book, but it's one chart that says permitted uses. And it has the list of down the side, and then what's permitted in each one. And you simply got to just take residential to be in commercial for residential out. As like commercial and residential are being permitted, so we just take it out.
So can I make a motion to amend Tim's proposal for the commercial district code to remove the North Carolina Board of Health comment? And also to make the change to the table that will remove residential as a permitted use during, on a commercial lot. Does that make sense?
Exactly.
Um, discussion?
Is this then as a form that can be sent to the next commissioner's meeting?
Yeah, it's a text amendment.
So with those changes, is what you're thinking? And so go ahead and send it with those changes?
Right.
Okay.
I don't think we need to review those changes.
And, and we don't need to have a public hearing from planning and zoning on this because it's already amended?
It's a text amendment, you, you're, the other piece you're writing is all brand new. It's going to be a whole new section. And we just need a consistency statement from, from this board to take it to the next board. But that other thing is a whole new rewrite, that's got to be, that's an ordinance, this is a text amendment.
And once that's, if, assuming that, that makes the next commissioner's agenda, it becomes public information once it's part of that packet?
Are you talking about this one? This one is going to go on there, they're going to have to look at it and then say they want to see it as an ordinance, which means that that, it'll be on the packet, it'll be advertised, because it's a public hearing, so they'll see it, so they'll come. I'll present it so they'll see it if they come. Then they'll say whether they want it in an ordinance form or not. If they say they would like to see it come brought back as an ordinance, then we'll have to go through the advertising of the ordinance and all that, so...
But this one doesn't have to do all that?
No, that has to do that.
Oh, this one does, yeah, okay.
That's this one. The other one, the one we did before this, is a complete ordinance itself, it's going to be the ordinance. And so that's got to be, go all the way through the same process down here that it goes through up there. Because it's a land use ordinance, we're not doing a text amendment. See, now, if we ever want to amend it, you know what I mean, then we can do it the same way. But that, that new ordinance has to go through two public hearings, one at your level before you approve it, send it up, and then at one of their level. There, there's no language in there about that at all, it's brand new.
And do you second Greg's motion?
Yes.
Okay, was there any other discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it carries unanimously. Let me tell you about the consistency statement. As we've been going through the land use process, we've all talked about the consistency statements that are required. They require us to do that, so, um, it's new, relatively new. So I wrote one, what it requires is, um, we need to approve the consistency statement and it would, um, we have to sign it and send it on with our recommendation. Um, you have to go back and you look at your current land use plan and compare what you're suggesting to change with your current land use plan. Well, our current land use plan, as you guys know, is, it doesn't define a lot of this stuff really well at all. Um, so what I have in there, um, is I, if, if, I, what I'm saying is, okay, Town Holden Beach Planning and Zoning Board hereby recommends approval of the text amendment to, um, one fifty-seven dot oh sixty-two Commercial District C one of the Holden Beach Code ordinances. As required by General Statute one fifty-three A dash three forty-four and one sixty A dash three eighty-seven, the Planning and Zoning Board has reviewed the proposed changes and finds them to not be inconsistent with the adopted two thousand and nine Campbell Land Use Plan, specifically goals and objectives and policies in section nine dot one of the land use and development. Uh, or the name of that is land use and development. In addition, the Planning and Zoning Board feels the changes are in the public's interest because they will promote public health, safety, and general wel- welfare within our community. Upon approval, the board of, uh, the board, by the board of commissioners, the comprehensive plan will be deemed amended and shall not require any additional request or application for amendment. So what I've done is I've gone back through all, a bunch of other towns' consistency statements, because there's not a whole lot of examples out there, because it's a relatively new process that we have to go through. So I did go back and looked at a whole bunch of different consistency statements and pulled what I could from, from them, adapted it and massaged it, and came up with that, so...
And there's, uh, and there's nothing that would be in conflict, you know, I can't...
No, we just didn't cover a whole lot in the current land use plan.
Does not inconsistent...
Yeah, no, it's a double negative, but it's not, it, it...
And is that enough to cover the requirements of the consistency statement?
Could it just be consistent?
It, it never addresses it. So that's why I was uncomfortable really putting consistent, but it's not inconsistent, so...
That's not unusual, that's not unusual language.
Okay.
That's not unusual language.
But, uh...
Yeah.
Right.
Any, if there were comments like encouraging commercial development, that kind of thing? This doesn't discourage commercial development. In fact, it, it, it makes it more compliant with the general health and welfare of the community, so...
Well, it'd make it a lot easier for someone to rezone some commercial. Because y'all aren't going to be able to rezone some commercial that can be built right up to the residential twelve.
That's true.
Now you have a standard by which you, you probably can approve some. That's one of those midnight thoughts I had.
So, um, the thing on these consistency statements, I have to tell you, is that now they're going through the court process and being adjudicated, and the, um, they're just really weird. Uh, they're having a hard time with this, I expect to see this probably changed at some point, would be my, my guess. But this is where we are now, so if anybody has any changes you'd like me to reword in at that...
I move it's approved as draft.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? That was unanimous. Okay, and we still don't have Pete.
So I guess I could try to go through the three things that we decided, if you want me to. Tim was there, you were there.
Moving on from commercial then, right? Okay.
Let's see, who went there? Ron.
Okay. I have it dimmed.
Okay, so, our little subcommittee was given a task and we were given... Well, I'll start with the three things for two thousand and nineteen. The first one was investigate potential vacant, uh, land that the town does not own, which can support additional visitor parking on the island if determined to be necessary. The second was to develop a list of town-owned properties that can potentially provide additional visitor parking if determined to be needed. Costs to develop, location and proximity to residential property should be considered. So we looked at all that and we looked at, um, some pictures that had been taken before all the stuff was implemented from the last parking committee, which was new signage and some, um, specific stuff for, um, golf carts and also some bumper things that were put in some of the parking lots. And there was pictures before that and pictures after that, and the pictures after that looked like it was for Fourth of July, before it was Memorial. And it looked like there was really no big parking issues, um, from after they implemented all their things. Although there were still some issues, people were confused about the signs, what did they mean here at the corner? Um, there wasn't any enforcement going on. So we came up with a statement to bring to this board, which is something along the lines of this. This was our motion. It is not necessary to establish additional public or private parking at this time. Continue monitoring the effects of new signage and maps identifying existing parking and provide additional awareness of present parking and increase enforcement. So that was our recommendation on those two items to bring back to the planning, who now gets to discuss it and then decide what they're going to send on to the... Do you want me to go through all of them or just take them one at a time like that?
Um, your call.
We, we should probably just discuss that, because otherwise you muddy the water with all the other issues.
There was four points to the tasker, so...
Yeah.
This kind of covers two of them.
Yes. So two of them said, look at if you want to buy land and, and if, if, if it's necessary. But we looked at all that and we said, at this point, it doesn't seem to be that there's a need for additional parking. And that was our motion to continue to monitor it going forward.
Now to get real picky, what was the criteria used to decide there was no need for additional parking?
Good question, because I, one of the things that I was asking was, what is our criteria to determine if there's additional parking needed? But we never could come up to a actual standard. It was really just looking at the pictures and seeing what it looked like on... And so you're looking at the worst case, right, Fourth of July, holiday weekend. I mean, that is the worst case that you're going to see. And it appeared that it was significantly better as far as people parking where they weren't supposed to on the right-of-way. It just looked way less congested compared to Memorial Day, to Fourth of July. So that's why I think we said it should be, continue to be monitored.
But you looked where, where did y'all look at?
It was all along, um...
The East End?
Yeah, the East End, pretty much. And then some of the marsh roads. And there was significant, um, gap, like there was lack of parking available on, on those marsh roads and, you know, and some of the other. And all back here, right, where the, right back here.
Yeah. I did notice that the town looks like they intentionally moved down the marsh side streets...
Yep, yep.
To encourage parking, but quite frankly, I didn't see a lot of cars parked there during the holiday weekend.
And you know, when you come down the bridge now, they have the two signs, right, to go both ways, which is...
And I think when they were pointing, I think the bulk of the parking pointing to the right, really, yes, there's a eight or ten places down. But other than that, there really isn't any...
Designated.
Designated parking, other than what we had decided to define the marsh side parking and, um... And I've yet to see the, the actual map that, that showed where parking was.
She could bring it up on the thing if, if you wanted to.
Okay, I tried to look at it.
Because it's on the website, right?
Tim, can you pull it up?
What?
Pull it up.
On the map, so we can see what the map looks like?
Uh, no, we, remember, it's that public...
I think, I think internet's down here.
We have internet.
So your internet is down again?
It was yesterday.
Back up, back up. I was playing that to you one time, that's your internet. Y'all's is internet, y'all's citizens.
That's the public internet.
Y'all own the internet.
The public internet.
Y'all own the town, y'all own the building, y'all own the internet, it's your internet, it's not our internet, it's your internet.
I talked to Heather, it was yesterday.
But we've delegated responsibility to the internet, you...
To me? That's, that, that sounds right, yeah.
Yeah, because if we had the internet, I could show you all the pictures even.
Comes under plan.
But, I don't know.
The internet comes under plan.
Yeah.
Well, I got it. It just came up.
Yeah, it was, it was, I hear, hear certain things.
I got it fixed, how about that?
Good job. You're an man of race. It's still, hey, it's still showing now on my phone.
Well, I think that the, while you're looking that up, Mark, um, the, the stuff we recommended last time, didn't really get put into place until later. You know, it was after Memorial Day, so there were pictures of Memorial Day that was kind of a mess.
Cluster.
And then, and then the, um, July was better. And it's like the stuff that we recommended last time was working, was kind of where they were. But if I recall, you guys also said you wanted to see more enforcement because you thought it was effective.
That was part of what we said. It said, continue monitoring the effects of new signage and map ident- identifying existing parking and provide additional awareness of present parking and increase enforcement, because there was a lot of complaints that it wasn't being enforced.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of complaints about it not being enforced.
So, we're going to go about that, we...
Public access.
Charge the police department, can we give them a quota?
We have to find them for not finding the...
Um, I don't know, all we can do, we're just taking a, we're just making recommendations to work to make sure that they're on with it, but...
The one that she put the parking? I couldn't find it.
What did the advisor recommend?
Pardon me?
Well, I'm sorry, what did the advisor...
Visitors, you know, I did very good.
That's what accessways are, that map is there.
It seems like that's where they should put the parking too.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it's where we went to first.
This is what we recommended. Continue monitoring the effects of new signage and maps identifying distant parking and provide additional awareness of present parking and increase enforcement.
That's not it, that's the public access. That's not visitor parking, that's the public access.
It's definitely there, I've seen it.
There is no parking out.
Tim, I thought you pulled it up, what it...
No, that's not it, that was...
No, that was accessways.
Oh, there's one above it, Tim.
Hmm?
There's one above it that says click here as well.
The visitor map?
Yeah, click that other blue one right there, see what that one looks like. Oh, oh, there it is.
Yeah, that's it.
Can't see it. Can't even go up big on it.
Well, plus it doesn't show the, the parking that we designated there along Scotchbonnet.
Well, okay, so, so, so that was an issue of contention, because those aren't...
They're not?
The town is not, not want to encourage the marsh parking, but it is available because it's, uh, right-of-way.
No, that, well...
It tells everything about each one of them.
That's the marsh.
I know, but we as a planning board said that those were valid parking spaces.
Well, those people over there say from a camera standpoint, they don't want to encourage it. Because I was saying, well, if you're going to park there, put parking signs, then people know they can park there. But they said, no, they don't want to put parking signs on the right-of-way places and the marsh because it might introduce some liability if something happened to the car when it was on marsh, like flooded or whatever. Well, you can speak for yourselves, because it was Tim and Rhonda who was having that concern.
I was too busy being those people over here. Yeah, uh, no, we, remember the other day, I gave a written, I gave a memo to David about golf cart parking, and in that, we didn't mention any of that. And I think that we made it clear that that was just us, that we weren't going to be able to tell people, and we wouldn't encourage it, but that those parking spots appear to be available, but we don't encourage it. You know what I mean?
So that's what he's saying, but I'm saying, if you're going to have those parking spots, then you should put a parking sign so people know they can park there.
They can, there's, there's, there's parking signs that says...
There's a sign that says no parking here and here. From here to corner.
But nobody knows that they're allowed to park there.
That's on every, that's on every street. It's not just there, it's on every street.
Yeah, so I think if you want them to park there, then we should have a sign that says you can park here, like parking available. Like the ones that you have on the strip are the ones that we have down there that are niched out. Otherwise, people don't know they can park there, because is it on your map that you can park there?
We see.
It isn't.
Well, no, it's not.
No, it's not.
Because the right-of-way, none of the right-of-ways are on the map, they're just supposed to know that they can park on the right-of-ways.
It was like a couple hundred, it was like a couple hundred parks, potential parking spaces, so it became...
It's so small.
Obviously, the name tied kind of...
She does, but it's so small.
How do you find it?
We could put out some orange cones or something.
Well, yeah, we, uh, we talked about all this and that's what we decided, but when they put the map up, that's not what actually happened. So, uh, changed after we talked about it.
Hey, Tim on the app, uh...
Uh, let's back up for a second. I have absolutely no idea or nothing about the app. I was not involved in the app or this map, uh, which I don't understand when I look at it.
And I wouldn't hold you accountable for that.
Because I think it should, I think the map, I really, listen, I really believe that the map should say what's available and what's not available. I don't understand why, I, you know, I, I assume if somebody says we got a parking map...
Now, on the app, it has, it has beach access, parking and...
Well, there's another, there's, on, on the site, there are two maps.
Yeah, it is.
One that shows... But there's, that's, that's the beach access one, but there's another map that's really, that shows the whole.
No, this is, this has got all three on one map.
Okay, so does it show parking on, on Scotchbonnet? Or any of the side street right-of-ways?
No.
The marsh side, basically the...
I mean, the, uh, the marsh, the canal streets aren't listed as...
No, just the outside.
Well, because I mean, I, I mean, I'm not sure we really want to encourage that either, right? I mean, it's available, but we don't necessarily... And it, and, and the point of the whole thing is that when they reviewed it, there wasn't a parking problem on Fourth of July.
It says parking is available on side streets per ordinance, right down to the bottom, big letters, two AM to five AM.
Okay. So it does say it, it just doesn't like show it as a blob.
Except between two AM and five AM.
Yeah, and is that twelve or two?
Two AM and five AM.
Yeah, okay, good.
It's two.
So somehow they got the message, because there was, not seemed to be a problem for parking Fourth of July week, which is the worst-case scenario.
No parking between the hours of two AM and five AM.
But we could, we said we should continue to monitor, and there are definitely things that could improve it. I mean, you could put more of those block things that is where you're supposed to park. Those would be helpful, I think, in certain areas, such as my opinion, or we can come up with that.
Portage John's at Greensboro, seven ninety-two.
I have some concerns about parking adjacent to that protected wetland. It seems like it's an environmental hazard. Somebody's, their gasket blows or something and empties out their oil onto the ground or, you know, just...
Well, I know, I'm...
Only build a house, huh?
On Scotchbonnet, it's a very wide right-of-way, probably fifteen or twenty feet.
On the marsh side?
Yeah.
Except when it floods.
It's because the, it's because the street wasn't built in the middle of the right-of-way.
But even when Scotchbonnet floods, that's very rare for it to come all the way up to the road there. It's actually crossing before it gets part of that width.
I mean, it's like the, it seemed, if I remember, and I may not be remembering correctly, but it seems like the, basically the width of a car, where grass starts. Is it wider than that?
The right-of-way is, but, um...
Yeah, here, just...
Okay. Anyways, that was just a sidebar, it seems like it's an environmental concern, maybe, you know, when the cars leak, you know? Mine does.
Okay, so the point of those two was, do we need more parking and do we want to go and buy it? And, and our committee said, no, we don't need additional parking. Continue to monitor the effects of the signage and provide increased enforcement. So now this committee has to decide what goes up to board of commissioners.
Basically, the, um, those two taskers... Basically, the, um, those two tasks were on there about either converting more land into parking or buying land to convert into parking.
Look, there's the parking.
They decided that, um, that we were good right now, keep monitoring it, but right now it seemed like it was good with the exception of enforcement, and it's because there were some examples and pictures of people doing bad things. Taking up multiple spots, parking the wrong way, even though there's bumpers, they park the wrong way, things like that, um, that they.
Right.
So.
Is it technically illegal to park opposite, you know, like, in other words, when you're going that, this way, I can't turn my car back the other way, like in New York City, you would say legal to park opposite.
Facing the, against the traffic.
Facing traffic, on the traffic side of the. I don't think so, probably not.
It's not kinda like well.
We can turn right on red here.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, does everybody accept that then?
Yes, that sounds great to me, actually.
Do you want me to read it again?
I don't.
Okay.
For anyone else to.
Accept this recommendation of a, um.
Peter will be here in a minute.
Motion.
So, um, the Parking CAC and Planning and Zoning feel that there is currently enough parking, so no cost estimates were prepared, 'cause that was one of their requests. Suggestions included, increase parking enforcement, better signage, they talked about, um, those, in some places, those signs, they're in the middle of the road, that say no parking here to corner, you don't know what they're talking about, it's confusing. I went and looked, yep, I don't get it, so, um, whatever. Um, continue to implement steps already approved, such as maps and bumpers, I, they're, they're, they're still working on it, I think was what we agreed, right? You guys agreed, um, and continue to monitor and revisit after a full summer season. I had that from your first meeting, that I'd made, made notes of. So, what I did was I took their two meetings, um, and kind of compiled what I was hearing them say into, 'cause what's gonna have to happen is we're gonna have to send a memo to the BOC, so I just kinda summarized it there.
So that was the first one, everyone okay with that one? Do you want to move on to the next one? Another thing was, investigate the possible use of paid parking with the use of KIOS technology as other municipalities have already started to use. So, we talked about that and we came back with the motion, um, that we recommend that the Planning and Zoning get requests for bids for paid parking. That was it.
Um, wait, I think it was that we recommended that the town send out an RFP, right?
Yes, yes. We, we, yeah, right, so we have to recommend it to the Planning and Zoning, and then the Planning and Zoning recommended it to the, the board, who would then ask the town to get the request for quotes?
Exactly.
So, so that paid parking, it would be existing parking we have today, convert that to paid parking?
Correct, no additional parking.
Okay.
And so, we would go to a company and say, here's all our parking, do you wanna implement some paid parking for us and enforce it?
And I thought the original committee determined that we just didn't have enough parking to make it efficient for anybody to do it.
So I think that's what the original committee did decide, but I think, I don't know if they went out for requests for quotes or it was just off the sidebar. So now we're saying that they should take a formal step and go and get quotes, and if, and if the vendors go back and say, it's not economical for us, we're not interested, then it puts it to bed, right?
Okay.
We discussed with two or three outside vendors, and, but it was mainly just issues and roadblocks and, and, you know, cost of administration, exactly, but nothing specific, and, and we had, we had learned that after extensive experience like they'd had with Oak Island, where it got all the way to, uh, commissioner approval before it got turned down, they'd invested a lot of resource and they were sort of reluctant to continue to offer all this free research without being compensated, so.
But the other thing is, we had, um, a committee member, Bob Bayless, who, he really did the due diligence in trying to contact them, but I think there's also some reluctance on the part of the vendors to actually treat that seriously, and you call up and say, hey, I'm on a traffic committee and we're talking about, would you be willing, would you, you know, that's not as, that's not gonna get their attention as much as if the town did an RFP, um, and then it's official and then it's for reals and, um, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I, we've talked about consistency statements here, and, and I'm not so sure as a planning and zoning board, I can say that this is consistent with our land use plan to implement paid parking. Um, I think that, you know, 'cause we talk about being open and the like, and, and it really, an absent, a real issue, I mean, if we had, people screaming that can't find a place to park and, and the like, um, I just, I have trouble pushing this item forward. But, you know, if the commissioners wish to pursue this, I guess that's their prerogative, but I, I don't see it as consistent with our product and use plan.
Um, I looked back and I didn't see anything in our land use plan at all that would prohibit that or really address it at all, but I will also tell you that the commissioners have looked at this issue as a source of revenue, and everybody around us is now doing it. Have you been following Oak Island? See, they went forward and they're, they're doing, I guess the technology's really changed since we looked at it.
I understand.
And, um, you know, that's one of the.
I know, it just seems like it's a, it's sort of contrary to our historical way, I mean, we, I mean, if you go to any of the, the.
We don't send a base opportunity.
We're open to the, to the broader public and.
But, yeah, again, all the other islands are doing it, so.
Well, no, Sunset and Oak Island have private, those are all the peer owners that are doing it, it's just that our peer owner has chosen not to do it.
But the key word, I think you said, was revenue source. This is not to improve parking, that's just a revenue source.
In my mind.
What we're trying to do is improve parking, right?
No, that's, that was a separate issue. So this is definitely, there, there was, there were sep- separate, completely separate entities that they were asking us to look at. So this does not have anything to do with improved parking. This was just investigate paid parking, it was a totally separate ask.
I stand corrected.
Yeah.
It was.
It was item number three.
Investigate possible use of paid parking with the use of KIOS technology or as other municipalities have already started to use, um.
No, I think part of it might be that from a revenue standpoint, like, we wanna, it costs a lot of money to have those people come, right? We have to do the garbage, we have to do the enforcement, we have to do, so maybe we can just get some of that back. I'm not, I'm, I don't think they're gonna say like twenty, you know, fifty dollars a day or something, they're just trying to make it more equitable for the town, that they use our resources, then they can pay a little bit towards them.
But we're gonna have, I mean, there's some impractical things to consider too.
Like all this parking right here.
We would either have to pay to park to come to these meetings or be applied some sort of a.
Well, sometimes you have stuff that says one hour parking or two hour parking, right?
I would be in favor of having something that, I don't remember who mentioned last time, a residence sticker, like a hurricane sticker or.
Residents don't have.
Right, but then, but then, okay, now you're, there's people who wanna use the park here that are, that are paying to rent a, a property, now they would have to pay to park to bring their kids down to play in the water, I just, but it's all of a sudden.
I don't, I don't know if I'm in favor of paid parking or not, but I think to Tracy's point, maybe we need to go do an RFP, let some people look at it and tell us what's possible, what's not possible, and at the end of the day, we may get the, the results back from RFP and say, yeah, that looks crazy, but it ain't as crazy as we thought it was gonna be, let's not do it.
Yeah, get the facts, right? That's all I think they're, they're asking from the first step. Get all the facts before you make a decision.
Yeah. But personally, I, I don't, I don't know how to separate the fact that the beach is a public trust area, the public ought to have some access to it, where do you draw the line on how much it costs them to have access to it? I just don't, I, I don't, I don't know how I feel about all of that.
I will say that, um, Riceville Beach gets a third of their revenue from paid parking.
They have two hundred thousand people on their coast.
They're different areas, different, wholly different entities.
They also have a, they also have a, a whole lot of commercial parking and commercial stuff, and they have a whole lot of area that is not, it's adjacent but not on the beach. Sunset is the same way, Sunset goes way off the beach and over into other areas. Uh, Ocean Isle is not limited just to their beach, they're, they're, they own, they're part of their corporate limits is out, outside of the beach. It's on the causeway and a little further out.
But wait, what is that, how is that relevant?
'Cause we're, we're unique in the fact that we're just the island, we don't own our own, we don't monitor and keep up with our own causeway, and so therefore we don't have all that commercial out there for like paid pa- parking or other amenities that, that you would typically associate with paid parking. What we have that draws us is the public beach, a public beach, it is not a private beach, it is a public beach, and everybody in the state of North Carolina induces funds into it whenever you get grant monies or other stuff, and so it is a public beach, and you, whether you do it paid parking, whatever, reasonable access to that beach has to be kept. Now, whatever reasonable access is, I don't know, but I'm just saying that that is the difference. The difference is, is that the draw here, when they come to us, they're not coming to that stuff over there, or we have very minimal commercial, they're not coming to our commercial. The draw over here is they're coming to use the public beach that they're entitled to use, whereas Ocean Isle has a lot of stuff, they even got a museum over there and all kinds of other stuff.
Yeah, but when they go to those things, they're not paying to park the beach.
The people in the town, not by the state, you understand what I'm saying? We are unique, I'm telling you.
And that's what I was talking about, about earlier, was where, where do you kind of draw the line for reasonable access?
The people that pay for parking at Sunset Beach and I think Oak Island are paying to park at the beach, they're not using any of those other resources, they're literally paying to park at the beach to go to the beach.
Also, it seems to me that they had a parking problem, like they did not have space, like especially Sunset.
They, all their, my understanding is all of their parking on Sunset Beach is paid, and you have to, you have to get on a lottery to in order to get there, and they don't have any other parking except for paid. It's the pier and there's other, even the, the town has some paid, it's all paid.
Okay, that's new since last year.
Yeah. I'm talking to people at Sunset Pe- Beach.
I, I, I thought when I called them not too long ago, they told me they only had partial payment, paying, and that was that, the pier. I thought that's what they told me.
I think they have other stuff too.
I think they changed that 'cause they're checking their names and stuff, remember all that?
And those people are literally parking to go to the beach, they're not going to the causeway or this, that, they're, they're parking to go to the beach, to have access to the public beach. And the resources that go along with that, but.
Um, the, uh, I just wanna throw this in here, then, at the meeting last night, the, um, East End people, we have, there's a, um, a lady on the committee who talked to, what'd she say, like twenty or twenty-something people, and they're all in favor of paid parking, they think it would help down there.
Where?
Parked in East End, Marty, remember?
That's where the bulk of the visitors congregated.
From what perspective?
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
I think because they've got, they've got, um, a lot of side street parking that can be.
Those are the basic property down there. It's not imposing, but.
So in other words, paid parking, they would want to keep people away.
Yeah.
Yes. That's what it's.
I think they're thinking that if people were parking.
Well, it would benefit them, let them keep people away.
Could be, um, but if they were also paying to park, it'd be more orderly, there'd be somebody enforcing that it's not.
I don't see how that would help them.
I don't live down there, she didn't ask me, I'm just replying, okay?
Yeah, well, I.
Um.
I, it's like I said earlier, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily want, from my perspective, and I don't get the vote, but, I mean, I've, I'd be in favor of having somebody come and look at it and evaluate what the opportunities are and is there benefit to do it? But I wouldn't necessarily wanna say that the Planning and Zoning is in favor of doing it yet, we're in favor of doing a more thorough professional evaluation and looking at the facts.
And that's what our, our recommendation was.
And I'm not against paid parking, I'm just throwing out some stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Get all the facts and then they can make a decision.
Well, determine, you know, the economic factor.
That's right, that's right.
It may not be. It may be the same thing that you guys encountered last time, but nobody even wants to bid on it because there's not enough spots and it wasn't, wouldn't make it, you know, profitable for a company to do it, so, but this time they've taken an official step, albeit a determination, and then they can decide.
'Cause last time I'm with those, you don't have to pay to park.
People here seven days a week, they're coming to town one way, personally, I've had to have three or four people. So that's gonna be a lot of money upfront for them to have to pay out.
Did, um.
Mine.
Or to be paid parking, or a night of labor, and for your resident.
Yeah.
The monitors and force, they're not capable of writing citations, right?
No, they do, I think.
They do have, yeah, I mean, they're made by the people.
They say they're, they're a, they're a private arm of the police force.
Yeah.
A lot of places now, you can go and park, you go on your phone, you put in your license plate, no?
Yeah.
And, uh, you pay for a certain amount of time.
Put a park over there and then said everybody.
And even in Wilmington, you could actually do that from the phone or you can feed quarters in.
How's the difference?
Yeah, and the nice thing is, is if you're out on the beach and you were really, had a really nice day, all of a sudden you wanna stay, you can just add some time, which is, you don't have to trek back to the.
But it's. It's better.
I was, I was in Freeport, Maine this summer, in Park where I should have, now I got a ticket, and they're now threatening to haul me to court.
I drive back to Maine, drive back to Maine for your court.
I don't wanna pay the ticket, but they're threatening to take me to court. Yes, I do.
But I do think, could we send a, a recommendation that any funds that were collected could be used to, um, offset, uh, some of the expenses that we incur because of our guests that come, like, um, the porta potties, extra trash, the securities, um, and to quote, enhance the visitor experience, that improved amenities? Could we put something like that away for your recommendation? To me, that would be fair.
That seems better, I wonder if we could have like a special parking fund that pays for something in particular, like the splash pad funded by parking, or the bathroom, or the, the Bridgeview Park funded by the parking, or something like that.
I think you gotta determine that the, the economic. 'Cause there's, there's considerable administrative expenses in a company, irrespective, even if you put meters in, you still have to, have to, um, have some policing and the like, and, and determine whether we're talking about something that is economically viable before you even, like, dispatch receipts, it might not exist.
That's true, I think we just need to do the evaluation.
Let's learn more.
Then we can decide. There might be a charge of ten dollars a day to do a lot of it.
Typically, you have merchants that have capability of extending parking to their customers at some fee.
Yeah.
Validating, yeah.
Yeah, they can validate it, right? Okay, so, you have a motion that you wanna take forward on that?
No, I need somebody to make a motion.
What do you have right now, now?
Um, that we feel we should investigate it further, um, these are kind of my notes on this one, I didn't have a lot of, didn't have a.
All right, so my motion is, what we had decided is that we, we, I motioned that we, um, send it up to the Board of Commissioners to get bids for paid parking.
Second.
Discussion.
You always say that, but I thought we already discussed it.
Is this bids or, is this for a study of?
No.
I can, RFP.
Yeah, request for.
Okay.
All, uh, all those in paper?
That is mine.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously, so we're gonna ask, um, that would be our, our ask on, um.
Number three.
Number three.
Did we do number two, did we vote up in motion on that? I don't think we did.
I know it was too, I know it was too late.
Did we?
I know it was too late on the one we just voted on, but I wanted to make sure, we're not saying we're in favor of paid parking yet.
We're just saying, voting to the.
We're saying the economics and the viability.
Did.
Will the, will the proposals include revenue predictions?
They would include whatever we put in our solicitation, which I'm sure that the primary freedom of doing that would be the economics of it, right? You wanna go back to?
Did we vote on this one, continue to monitor the effects of signage and all that stuff, did we vote on that? Did we make a motion for this?
I don't think.
That's what we stumbled over with the parking committee, why we had to re-meet.
Go ahead and redo.
All right, so here is the motion. It is not necessary to establish additional public or private parking at this time, continue monitoring the effects of new signage and maps identifying existing. Continue monitoring the effects of new signage and maps, identifying existing parking, and provide additional awareness of present parking and increased enforcement.
Sorry, ma'am.
Everyone okay with that?
Did you have continue to monitor in there?
Yep.
Okay.
Provide additional, yes, continue to monitor the effects of new signage.
Okay, we have a second, do more discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass you now, please.
Okay.
Purchasing additional property for parking included?
No, those two were said, if, if necessary, is necessary, and so, no. We said, it is not necessary to establish additional public or private parking at this time, that was my first sentence.
Okay.
So the third...
I want a copy of, of that one here.
Okay, sure, it's, it's sent to you back and forth, it's, okay, you said just send it to me. We had one other task in the, in the thing, which was supposedly a mid-year two thousand and eighteen, but we just didn't, we got to it when we met, was identify the next phase, identify the next phase of the parking project. With the support of a third party, investigate the possibility of organizing Jordan Boulevard to include the surrounding pavilion area that could potentially increase the number of parking spots and enhance the aesthetics of the location. A study may have been done a number of years ago, but the results cannot be located. So, since then, Tim has located this study that was done, along with the picture of it, right? So, our recommendation on that...
Could you guys see the picture from the... Tim, can we see the picture?
It's a picture, right?
It's a big picture of, of a lot of...
I don't know what happened to it.
Oh, what happened to it, disappeared.
No way.
No, you're broken.
Cause our motion for that was to, to send the Jordan Boulevard plan layout to the Board of Commissioners to review. So basically, we just wanted to show them this. It's, it's not valid, cause it's...
It doesn't valid because...
It's outdated and it doesn't have all the stuff.
And they built a whole bunch of stuff that wasn't there.
Doesn't have the sewer thing on there, so they need to look at that and then decide if they wanna proceed.
They ignored it.
You showed, showed it to them?
No, I said the people that built, did it originally ignored it. They put stuff at the end of it, they didn't build it the way it was on the plan.
It was done by...
Done by NC State.
NC State did it originally.
Did we pay for that, or was it private?
I, I believe it was for free.
A doctoral study or something.
Exactly.
When he said the, the people ignored it, I think he means the town Board of Commissioners.
You, you people, you people ignored it.
Well, it was what, ten years ago, so it was different people.
Yeah, you people.
Are you gonna get it to show everyone?
You want me to go get it?
Yes.
Oh, Lord.
So basically, um, the prepared plan was found, but it would need to be updated. Because for example, you'll see that they built a pavilion and it does not conform to what the diary ever looked at, but, um... The, um, the Parking CAC felt that it was a worth, it was worthwhile and should be investigated further with a goal of enhancing aesthetics, increasing available parking, um, and creating a town center or central business district sort of in that area, down Jordan. Sort of it'd be like, think of a focal point for the town.
It's pretty nice, it's...
It is nice, it's nice, yeah. I don't know what the cost would be, um...
And they have the parking going this way on both sides, so you could get more parking on the street.
There's also more trees in that thing.
There was tons of trees in that.
Have you seen it?
Can we put a border tower in the middle of it?
There it is.
These guys don't understand.
I saw it somewhere.
It's kind of a vegetated island in the middle, so you could do parking, they've got per, or angled parking in the center and...
We've already gone and done stuff over here, paradise is right there. Stuff wasn't done up here like this.
Is that public?
That isn't a lot more possible than this.
If it had to be reworked.
Yeah, you can just exit out and start over.
Love it, paradise is right there on the corner.
No, it's not, it's, it's back, that's why.
Not paradise, I'm talking about...
Oh, mermaids.
Mermaids, it used to be paradise.
Mermaids is, mermaid, you talking about right there?
Right there, there's a building right where them plants are at, that's what I'm talking about, mermaid.
They're picking up your, maybe a lot of trees.
No, I think he wouldn't like it, because it's got a lot more parking.
They'd have to turn on this building.
No, it wouldn't be exactly like that, if you work around it, it'd be... It is nice.
No, she's going down to eat with a girl, she's gonna leave me a key.
Okay, so, um, so we need a motion on that.
Is this something that, that you need to present, or someone needs to present to them, or is...
Here's my, here's my thought, is that we would send them in our likely, get on the water tower and the other things with our, with our recommendations, and then... How do you see it going?
I don't know if there would need to be clarification or anything, but...
When, when we did the parking before, the Parking Committee wrote a report, which was adopted on plan, but it was, but that hasn't happened, so...
No, I presented, I presented a summary in that.
Right.
And, uh, I guess the key thing here is this, this whole, if you wanna proceed with parks, and you really need to go the next step and get something concrete. And the rest of this stuff is...
But as far as the Jordan Boulevard, we were just saying, take, show them that rendition that was done and ask them if they wanna, basically, they'd have to pay or get some, or do it for a new one. Do you wanna do a new one, are you interested in that? Cause that would cost money possibly, unless they can get it for free again.
So is there a motion then?
Yes, what's the motion?
Um, can you read the motion back, Rhonda?
I don't think I got it all. Should take the, the drawing that we have to the Board of Commissioners for them to look at and see if they want to proceed with it.
Correct.
Talking about the Jordan Boulevard piece of this.
Correct. We broke it down into the steps that they had given us. So I make that motion that Rhonda just said.
Second.
Okay, um, discussion.
It's not a feasible plan.
Right.
Start over, man.
Yeah, I hear you.
Agreed. Would you get the idea of what, you know, and then they have to have a new...
It's an inspiration.
They have to have a new study done.
It's a starting point.
And that might cost money. They wanna spend money.
And it is possible to come up with a plan and then ignore it.
Yeah.
As we see.
Well, they may not have the money to implement it. First, they need the money to create it, then they need the money to implement it.
I ain't for my parking meters.
Um, so then, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed.
No, he's...
He said aye.
He said a...
He said aye.
Okay, okay, so we're all in favor then, is that correct?
Correct.
All men are two votes.
Well, if you don't vote, it's affirmative, well, it's a test, so... We're recommending that that drawing go forward then. Tracy?
That's it, those were our four things that we had to look at.
Not that it's overly complicated things, but if we were to proceed with paid parking, we really would have to address the right of way issue again.
Completely agree.
Everybody would immediately then go park on the side streets.
Completely agree. I actually wanted to put in there that if you do the paid parking...
But that would have to be intricate with that, uh, and then you, you have to pay to park in private right of way, or public right of way, whatever you wanna call it, you know, would that have to be a paid...
Okay, my understanding is the right of way belongs to the town, is that correct, Tim?
No, the home state.
Access, the town can access it, but it's still your property.
Between the property line and the street, is town property.
Town right of way, it was road right of way.
Between your property line and the street.
It's dedicated for the road right of way and dedicated for, to the town.
You can use it, but it belongs to the town. They have to go in there and put utilities and stuff in, they just don't, you know, they...
We would have to change the right of way parking, if we did paid parking, cause then they wouldn't park in the paid parking, they'd park in the right of way.
But then if you decide to put your post up and you don't want them to park there, what you gonna do with that meter? It was just put in or however they do it.
I'll tell you that Oak Island...
Cause they have a way to prevent you from parking in front of your house now, so...
Oak Island, it went through and they're having a thing where they're cleaning out all the right of ways. You can't have anything in your right of way because they plan to use that for paid parking. So, I mean...
Yeah.
We just added something else to our right of way, those posts.
Yeah.
Right? So, we're adding two, instead of taking two. But that's where utilities are too, you know what I mean? I couldn't, I wouldn't even imagine...
But Tracy's made about a point in that, um, you still allowed the, the parking in the right of way, who would go to a line if you're parking in the right of way?
Well, there's also proximity to beach access, where you want to get...
Well, and it's also, you also gotta remember that even though it's for sale, the, the pier does not charge to park there today.
Right.
And that's, that's prime parking.
Right.
So that's always going first, that's gonna be competition to our...
Always folders.
Pretty much all the side streets have beach access, but it's supposed to be private beach access, but no one will care anything about that and good luck enforcing it. So, beach access is not a problem on the side streets, right of way parking.
I didn't realize there were that many beach accesses.
Yeah, almost every street down has beach access, their own beach access.
I know from the, where I am down to Jordan, there's about every four, every forty thousand right of access.
Or seven, they're not parked well, so it's gonna be a few. But... I had one hard last minute, I saw, we're trying to get in the bus, and here a few...
Right, if you were coming down, you're still very close to completing it.
Out my door.
Yeah, um, okay, so then, I think that that concludes our discussion on the Parking CAC and, um, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
I do not.
Um, I'd like to have the record show that, um, thanks to Pete for chairing it, to Tracy for serving as the secretary, and to Bob Bayless, Kim Fenrich, and Marty Erlewood for serving on it.
Thank you, good luck.
I'd like to thank me for going to all the meetings.
Yes, and thanks to our...
Well, come here.
Rhonda did good on meetings.
Okay, um...
It was only two meetings.
So then, the way we're gonna wrap that up is I'm going to write a memo with the, what we just discussed, and we'll send that on to the Board of Commissioners and... Did everyone get a copy of the water tower memo?
No.
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 Is there another packet we just got here?
What kind of water tower memo y'all talking about?
I haven't got one either.
What's that water tower memo, it's our...
I sent the water tower memo to Tim, uh, on one thirty, to distribute to you guys, you all have one copy.
Oh, okay.
I have copies, if anybody wants to read it, um...
Did you have a water tower memo?
It's not in that packet, but I was hoping you would send it back.
I said she sent it to me.
I did send it to you.
Did you send it to us?
No.
I didn't see it, I don't even, I'm not in the habit of keeping stuff secret.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean you didn't send it, when did you send it?
Probably an internet problem.
January thirtieth?
What day was that?
I don't know, that's what the email stated, it'd be one thirty.
Sure, I see it, Tim. Do you hear what I said? It's probably an internet problem.
Well, that's it, you sent it on a Wednesday, I don't receive stuff on Wednesdays.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
You sent it on January thirtieth, I, I, I don't, I don't understand. Do you have anything else?
I don't know, I can, I can report it to you.
Okay.
Um, I can board it up, I can send it to you, I thought they wanted it to be...
I'll send it, I'll send it to y'all as soon as I see it.
Okay.
So if you, if you have not sent that memo to the Board of Commissioners yet?
Yes, and I also copied Heather and, um...
I'm gonna better check if it did.
So we, we voted on it, we approved it, but you guys want a hard copy, so we're soft copy.
Yeah, y'all.
Are you presenting that at the board, or is it on the agenda?
No, I don't think you need it.
Just a memo?
Just a memo.
Okay. You sent it to all the commissioners?
What did it say?
I put it on the, I've sent it to Heather to distribute as part of the...
And was it?
I haven't seen it on the agenda, so I don't know. Have you seen an agenda?
For what?
For the next morning.
Yeah.
No.
This has been the weirdest meeting, honestly.
They probably ain't sent it out yet, they're probably waiting on us.
Okay, well...
I guess, I don't know.
Let me just say this, and we will follow up and make sure that there's a copy for the Commissioners and if it's not there, how about... Um, our next meeting is February twenty sixth for the Land Use Plan, Chapter Four. Somebody needs to make their notes on Chapter Four, and we'll meet again at two o'clock on February the twenty sixth.
That's that next meeting? Okay.
I need to make him a book. Bob, remind me to make him a book.
Bob ain't got a book?
No. Remind me to make him a book.
What kind of books he need?
For Land Use Plan.
Land Use Plan, so Bob needs Chapter Four and...
I don't know how we're gonna have the extra mega, cause they...
Are there any other announcements? Woody, are there any other announcements?
No, if you, if you see me something in my email, tell you, important.
Okay. If it's from me, it's important.
I try to prioritize.
I see you got your name change on your email address, so, yeah.
Do you?
They must have heard it, and when you were...
Yeah, me, y'all started.
I asked Heather to fix it for you. Are you gonna send us that water tower memo?
I don't have it, I'm telling you, I, I don't have it, I'm not in the habit of... I have no reason to hold a water tower memo hostage, I promise you. If I had it, I would send it on.
As long as somebody would send it out to us, that's awesome.
Hey, hey, wait, send me a copy of it, I'd like to see it.
I make a motion to the chairman, he'll talk about that later.
All those in favor?
Aye.